Jeff Blanchard, they're going to join us out here and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. It's time for public comment. Does anyone want to address the Salem Housing Authority? All right. Commissioner Nanki, the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move the consent calendar as provided.
Second.
Seconded by Bernard. Any discussion? Mr. Wilch, would you like to highlight anything in your information report, which, by the way, was very good. Drew several comments of high-quality workmanship, particularly in the budget piece.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can't take full credit for that, but I'll take some. The, um, excuse me. I think it's always important for us to highlight the partners we have, Marion Polk Food Share, the gardens that we've created on all of the public housing and affordable housing properties. We facilitated his staff. Clearly, the residents take it and run, and it provides quite a bit of fresh vegetables and fruit for them during the summer, for sure, into the winter if they can, for instance. And it seems to be a good activity that brings community together, so we're really pleased with that. We put quite a bit of time into that, and the residents really enjoy it and prosper from it.
Great. Good harvest message. Commissioner Dickey.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for all the work that you're doing with your community gardens. And I don't know how many of us follow the Salem Housing Authority on Facebook or Twitter, but you really seem to have created a good sense of community, and the gardens is just an example of that. I know you have lots of other activities and lots of things you do, and I think that's really great. I mean, when I see your posts, it just really feels like you've created a home and a community for your residents. And I really appreciate you guys doing that.
All right. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. There are no special orders of business, no unfinished business, no new business. Without objection, the Housing Authority is adjourned.
Excuse me, Director Wells.
Did you have your hand up, Director Wells? I missed you.
It's over.
The budget was on the consent calendar, and so it was approved as part of the consent calendar.
Did you have something you wanted to do?
No, it was just that this was the budget that was being presented. Just wanted to know if everybody understood that for S H A tonight, the public at home, as to what was adopted here tonight.
We had no one signed up.
Okay.
Thanks for doing that.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. It's always such a pleasure to come into the council chambers and see so many people who are here. We appreciate your attendance and hope that you find this evening's meeting as interesting and as helpful as we always do, right? We think it's a great way to spend our every other Monday night, so thank you very much. I will now call to order the Urban Renewal Agency meeting for September 9, 2013. Will the recorder please call the roll? Board Member Bennett.
Here.
Board Member Tesler.
President.
Board Member Nanki.
Here.
Board Member Claussen.
Here.
Board Member Dickey.
Here.
Board Member Thomas.
Here.
Board Member Benars.
Here.
Board Member Clem.
Here.
Chair Peterson.
Here.
All right. Do we have any reports of boards, commissions, or committees? It doesn't look as though we do at this point. We'll move on for public comment. Do we have some people who've signed up? We do. We have two individuals for testimony. Teresa Campbell, followed by Mark Wig. If you would please state your name and address or your ward. You have three minutes, and at the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on. And at the end of three minutes, the red light comes on. Welcome.
My name is Teresa Campbell, and I come from Ward-
Oh, excuse me, can you pull the microphone down closer to your mouth? There we go. That should help. Try to speak into that.
My name is Teresa Campbell, and I come from Ward Eight. I was not given an opportunity to address this committee when a decision was made to decline on a grant for using funds from the West Salem Urban Renewal. I'm here now to seek your approval for reconsideration. I appear to defend a request for an exemption of the five-year waiting period from the West Salem Urban Toolbox Grant. My husband and I received a Toolbox Grant in 2010. Is that for me?
No, go ahead.
Oh. We received a grant in 2010 to modify the windows and doors of a commercial building that we own. At that time, we requested information about the awning. It was in need of repair. At that time, we were told there was no code as it related to awnings. Since then, it was brought to our attention that there is an overlay in that area. We are now being required to replace that awning at a cost of about $10,000. The overlay was unknown at the time. We entered into the grant request in 2010. The contractor and I were advised by numerous agencies that there was no code that existed as it related to that awning requirement. The awning was removed. At this time, we have received notice that we are in code violation as we are in that overlay area, and awning was required at a 90% coverage of the face of the building and three feet out. That awning is going to cost us $10,000 plus the cost of an engineer, which is $1,500, and the permit fees, which come to just shy of $1,000. There are four remedies that I would suggest for this council. One is there is an awning variance that my husband and I requested for that building. In that scenario, there would be no cost to the city or ourselves. No awning would be installed, and the building would stand beautiful as it is. It is on the corner of McNary and Edgewater. I think that it would attest to its historic significance if there was no awnings. But in the alternative, I would seek an amendment of the 2010 grant, which would add, which would seek an exemption to the $20,000 maximum, which would incorporate the cost of the awning. In the alternative, I would seek an amendment to the 2013 Tenant Improvement Grant. That grant was originally sought by a tenant that wanted to move into our property. The webpage gave an opportunity for tenants to apply. She, it was stated that I needed to apply for that instead as the landowner. I am not seeking undue enrichment. Mr. Gross has advised me that there have been changes based on the error of communication, but I still stand owing $10,000 for an awning. Are we good? I am not a public speaker.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there questions by any councilors? Nope. All right. Thank you so much for coming down this evening. All right, and Mark Wig. And please give your address, Mr. Wig, or your ward number.
Yes, Mark Wig. I'm at 1950 Saginaw Street South in Salem. And tonight on the agenda for the Urban Renewal District is modifying the map for the south waterfront area. And I'd recommend that, based on the fact that you decided to give a tax break and not collect taxes from the developer on the south waterfront urban renewal area, that it might be good just to eliminate that whole urban renewal district. Because those, the reason you have an urban renewal district is to collect those taxes and then improve that area. And by saying we're not going to collect those taxes, what's the purpose of an urban renewal district? And what are you gaining from that if you're not going to collect the taxes? Ten years from now, you could open up the urban renewal district again and collect the taxes and, you know, and start doing the improvements. But the urban renewal district, people said it was blighted. It needs improvements. We're going to collect taxes and put those taxes into that area. Now you said we're not going to collect those taxes. It's confusing, and it doesn't make much sense. So maybe either you should reconsider the vote to not collect the taxes or eliminate the urban renewal district. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Wig? All right, thank you. Appreciate your testimony this evening. All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Member Bennett, would you please make a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Tesler to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We have no action items. There are two items of information reports in your packet that I'd just like to remind you are there. We have no special orders of business or unfinished business, and no public hearings tonight. For the agency, no new business, and we are adjourned. All right. All right, I'll now call to order this evening's meeting of the Salem City Council for September 9, 2013. Would the recorder please call the roll? Counselor Bennett.
Here.
Counselor Tesler.
President.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Claussen.
Here.
Counselor Dickey.
Here.
Counselor Thomas.
Here.
Counselor Benars.
Here.
Counselor Clem.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here. Thank you.
The first thing on our agenda are the additions, approval of additions, deletions, and revisions. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move additions, or the deletions and revisions to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to approve the additions, deletions, and revisions. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We now have time for council comment, and I would invite councilors who have comments to make, information to share. Counselor Benars?
Thank you. I have actually two good things to report on this evening. First off, I want to say congratulations to our city staff, in particular Linda Norris, our city manager, for being able to maintain our bond rating at AA2 standing, which is the same as it was last year. As other towns and cities are going downward, at least we're able to maintain our level. And I know that it's very important this year as we come through and we go to extend further sale of bonds for the bridges and streets improvements that we have yet to do. So that was the first kudos I wanted to give out. The second one that I wanted to say was thank you, Brady Rogers and Corinne Fletcher, for putting on the Salem Sunday Streets this last Sunday. Yesterday, they closed State Street between Front and the State Capitol along the way. And along the way, there were numerous booths of different variety of community support agencies, personnel, people, information, recycling, National Guard, neighborhood associations, just a nesundary of different things. It was wonderful to be able to walk from one end to the other of State Street. And this is the first time we've had this this year, but I think big kudos should go to Corinne for the hard work that she is doing in this whole thing.
I'd like to add my kudos to that, to the staff and to the community who came down and rode their bikes and their trikes and their longboards and skateboards and walked on their feet, which is what I did. It was a great event. Thank you to Linda Norris, our city manager, and to all the staff that were involved with that. It was truly a wonderful event for the community. Counselor Clem has a comment.
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. I represent the city on the State Advisory Commission for Transportation. This last Thursday, the regional partners consisting of the counties, the three-county area, and a number of private business folks on this commission on transportation voted unanimously to forward the application to ODOT for the remaining $1.581 million to build the Minto Bridge. Keep your fingers crossed. The region votes this coming Thursday and Friday. Hopefully, I'll be able to send you an email that it's going on to the Order of Transportation Commission for the last dollars needed to build that bridge. So special thanks to staff and our wonderful county partners and other cities in the Yamhill, Marion, and Polk County areas.
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last week, we, several of us, had the opportunity to attend the open house for ODFW on Fairview Industrial Drive. A wonderful day was had by all. Really nice facility. I was impressed with the quality of my tour guide as well. And as for a couple of their employees, I suppose they're all right.
You better clarify, Counselor Nanki.
Counselor Tesler works at said office.
Yes.
Other than that, I'd just like to say over the last couple of weeks, my email is working. I've received many. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other councillor comments? We'll move on to ceremonial presentations, and I understand there is a presentation. I believe Counselor Clem is really a large part of this. Counselor Clem, would you like to actually take this part of the presentation and do this yourself?
Well, I figured it'd help, but thank you. Can you hear me? My name is Counselor Dan Clem, and I'd like to introduce the team who has put together the 911 Remembrance Ceremonies here in Salem, both in 2006 and 2011. And tonight, we have the special honor of receiving a flag, which will, others can explain here in a minute. But I'd like to recognize a couple of people who really are trying to respect and honor the fallen and those who are serving. And with us tonight, we've got Sue Thompson. She's wearing her blue shirt. We've got Lyle Lordhorst, who's wearing his Les Swab shirt. And a special introduction to the man who really is the guy that keeps us all focused and really remembering those who have served, and that's my great friend from Gresham, Kelly Brumel.
This is Lieutenant Kelsey. He's from the USS Johnson Stennis. He's here to deliver the 9/11 flag that has all the names of all the people that were killed at the towers. It's called the Flag of Honor. The flag is 20 by 30 feet, and it's going to be flown here at City Hall or raised here at City Hall. There's not a pole big enough, I think, around here that will fly this flag. Lieutenant?
Man, on behalf of the USS Johnson Stennis, Miss Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and present the Flag of Honor.
Thank you so much.
And as a special token, this is, for those who don't know, in the Navy and the military, we, the coins are a big tradition, called challenge coins. And so every deployment, we make our own challenge coin. And so on this challenge coin, ma'am, you're going to have, this is the Carrier Strike Group Three. It has every squadron and every ship in the strike group, along with the Johnson Stennis. So we want to give this to you as a gift as well, ma'am.
Thank you. Well, I will display that in my office, and yes, the flag is going to be hanging here at City Hall. Thank you. I appreciate your service.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Kelly. And so the plan-
Kelly tried to give me a mic, but I have a big mouth, so. Now, the plan for the flag, so you know, once we guard, now we're in dry dock. So we're up in Puget Naval Shipyard. And for the next 14 months, we're not on water. We're in dry land. So once we come out of water, what we'd like is, we'd like the flag to be sent back to us. And then we're going to fly it while we're in fifth fleet, in our seventh fleet. And then what we do, once we fly it in those areas on top of the ship, then we'll come back with certificates of authenticity, saying it was flown aboard the Johnson Stennis on this day, and then we can further honor the license.
How many men and women serving on the USS Stennis?
When we have, just the shipyard, we have, or just the ship staff, we have around 2,800. When we're full staff with the strike group, we have around 55,000. We are a floating city. Everything that you would think.
So the plan is, we'll fly the flag this year. We'll fly the flag next year in 2014. The Stennis comes out of dry dock when?
Stennis comes out in mid-2014. We'll be on deployment in 2015, a lot earlier than anyone.
So after you fly it in 2014, then it'll come back to us, and it'll go out on board the ship, and it'll come back to you in 2015.
Thank you. We're honored.
Don't drop it. Don't start yet. You have some.
Oh, drop it down.
I was saying, I forget things. This is something else we want to do. This is from Johnson Stennis, on behalf of the captain and the executive officer. We wanted to go ahead and present this to you as well. This is a captain's coin, and it says, "To those who can't read, "To the city of Salem, Oregon, in memory of those lost on September 11, 2001. "From USS Johnson Stennis, even 74, look ahead." And on top it is a photo that we took on this past deployment of two Hornets launching off from the aircraft carrier. That's not doctors. That's a real photograph. And then the slogan, "The Never."
Thank you very much. We'll have that on display as well.
If I can get a photo of that after the meeting?
Certainly. Yes, absolutely. All right.
And Mayor, if I could, the fire department is going to be hanging this for us, and so they're taking it, and they'll hope to have it up very soon.
Wonderful. Thank you. Counselor Bennett, did you have a comment?
Just a question, Madam Mayor. Where will this be hanging if the public wants to come see the flag?
It will be in the atrium because we want it to be covered. So it'll be hanging kind of cat a corner. I don't know if that's a Colorado term or an Oregon term. Inside the atrium at City Hall.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Was there anyone in the chambers that had wanted to make public comment at this time? This is comment on agenda items other than public hearings or deliberations. All right, seeing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. Counselor Bennett, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the consent calendar. Is there a discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Counselor Tesler.
I'm sorry, I'm a little bit late. I just wanted to comment on 3.2A.
Yes.
I just wanted to remark upon what a special thing that is because only eight mayors in the entire United States were invited to go to this national session of Mayor's Institute on City Design, and our mayor is one of the eight to go. So that's pretty cool. And I just think it's going to be a good thing for you. I think you're going to have no lack of case studies to take with you. And I look forward to what you bring back to us. Please tell us when you get back what you learned and how it was like. I'm eager to see.
Absolutely. I'll share that with the council, and I'm excited about the opportunity as well. And I'd like to take a moment to say thank you to staff who are really always just solidly there, supporting the council and supporting the mayor. Thank you so much because they've been a tremendous help to prepare the materials for both the person who's coming here from their offices in the east to meet with us for a day, and then I will be back in Charleston, South Carolina with, again, the materials prepared by staff. So thank you so much for that. Thank you. All right, we're in the middle of a motion, as I remember. And so all those in favor of the motion to move the consent calendar, right? Did we say nay?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
It was already voted on?
Yeah.
Oh, all right.
Then we had the late one to pardon.
Okay, then the motion's passed. Thank you. We'll now move to public hearings, item 4.8. And do we have a staff, any staff report, or do we simply start with a motion on this item? Motion, Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that council continue the hearing to October 14 for the purposes of questions of staff and council deliberations, hoping tonight we can have questions of staff. The written record will remain open until 5:00 PM on October 14. Counselors will provide any additional questions to staff in writing by 5:00 PM on September 13. And staff is directed to respond to councillor questions with a supplemental staff report prior to the continued hearing on October 14.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by, thank you, by Counselor Clem. Is there discussion on the motion?
Madam Mayor, this is just, thank you. This is an opportunity for all concerned to have a chance to look at a whole range of issues that have been raised around this access issue through the park to the mountain, or to the Pringle proposal for apartments on what's referred to as the park portion of their property. I think it's of assistance to councillors, to the requester of the access, as well as to the public to continue to discuss this. I think for myself, this has been some of the best discussion, public discussion. It all goes on in front of me about 6:00 AM each morning when I do email, but it's great reading. It's really very, very interesting, the variety of opinions, the quality of discussion that's going on in the community around this. And secondly, there is so much, both at stake and so much information to be kind of digested by the staff for us. We're just going to have to, I think, give them some time to put together the kind of staff report we're going to need to go into deliberations that are meaningful on this issue.
Thank you. All right, Counselor Claussen and then Counselor Nanki.
Would the maker of the motion mind reviewing those dates one more time for me?
Yes, thank you, if you don't mind, Madam Mayor.
No, do, please.
The hearing would be- The, the hearing would be continued to October 14th. The written record would remain open until 5:00 PM October 14th. Counselors will provide additional questions other than those posed tonight by September 13th at 5:00 PM in writing. And the staff will produce a staff report on October, for us by October 15th, which means we'll see it in advance of that date at some point.
All right.
And so that September 13th's council questions was intentional as opposed to October 13th?
I'm just going by the calendar.
It takes, takes some amount of time for staff actually to research and answer the questions as well as get the staff report repaired. So that date was intentional. If the maker of the motion or the council would like to change that date to something later, I'm sure staff can accommodate it.
If I may, follow that with another question.
Certainly.
I'm just trying to wrap my brain around it to make sure I'm okay. What, is the motion intended to allow more questions during the evening of October 14th after the staff report has been reviewed?
Yes. Yeah, I, I think when you get a staff report, it often prompts more questions.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm thinking was.
It has lots of answers and probably will prompt some additional questions. So we want to leave that open for you.
Okay, as long as questions are available, then, then I'm okay with that.
But, but it, it does contemplate that counselors tonight will ask questions.
Yes, we're going to be doing that.
And hopefully get to the heart of the issues in front of us, that by the 13th, you will have had a chance to really think it through and supply any additional written questions that came up. We're trying to start to close this thing down. There's just so much information out there. That's the idea. And then I would expect on the night, there, there just always are, what do you mean by this kind of questions? Is that?
No.
Okay.
Okay. The way I'd like to proceed with this, this evening, council, is to allow each of you in turn to ask the questions that you have come with tonight, that you would like to present to staff. But I would not anticipate that we will deliberate tonight. I would anticipate that our deliberation will occur on October 14th. So I would encourage you to be ready for your questions now. If you're not ready this evening for a verbal, with verbal questions, then of course, we can have them in writing up until September 13. But we, our whole, our whole purpose this evening is to bring out onto the floor as many of those questions that counselors have in an orderly, systematic way. So if you'll indulge me by not crisscrossing back and forth the room, I'd like to just go around and receive questions. And again, not, not deliberate tonight and not, not, not debate with one another also this evening. It's not a time for that. So questions are welcome, and I will start with Counselor Bennett. Excuse me, Counselor Claussen, did you have a question?
Did we want to vote on that motion for the continuation, or do you want to, I'm okay if we do it later, if we want to do the questions of staff first?
We probably should vote on the continuation now.
Yes.
Oh, all right. All right. All those in favor of continuing the hearing as was described in the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Counselor Claussen. All right, we'll start with Counselor Bennett. Questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, for me, central to the discussion is understanding and receiving from staff as definitive a timeline and scope as possible for a potential NEPA review if the council were to vote to provide access through the park. That seems to be one of the most difficult. I've seen one-year estimate, a two-year estimate, and, and then sort of everything in between. And I really think we need to understand what, what's at stake if, if the council were to vote for that access, or were to allow the fire access. I'd like to understand on both access questions through the carousel and through the park for fire, fire and emergency access. And whether both prompt, neither prompts, I, that, this is so up in the air to me. I, I'm really not sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Other questions, Counselor Bennett?
Really, not right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Tesler?
Thank you. One question that I would have would be, if access was allowed, would there be an ongoing shared expense between the city of Salem and the owners of this project for such things as roadway and entry, landscaping care, wrong access points, security lighting, et cetera? I'd also like to see all points of access clearly described that are available to the developer, not just one. And I think, you know, I, I also have to echo Counselor Bennett's comments that I, at this point, that would be probably what I'd be asking for now. I would have other conditions that were based on approval. But I don't feel like I have enough, that the project is gelled enough for me to really have a lot of, a clear, distinct list of questions at this point. But I think that's a good start.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, and I think the need for process is the, the big question that, that all the counselors would have had. Couple other in regards to railroad and potential for permitted crossings. Just clarification on that, since several people have indicated that there are no restrictions thereof, but we seem to have fought that a couple of times. So I'd like to actually get some clarification on both potential for permanent access as well as temporary access. And on the temporary access side, an indication from the, the developers to timing on the entirety of their project potentially. And then a clarification, if we can get it from ODOT Rail, on how long a temporary crossing can be in use prior to a, a permanent crossing coming online.
Okay.
And one last one.
Yes.
Deciple readings from train horns, and exactly where they would be required to, to sound that horn on both directions of travel, and what the estimated banking decimals is off of a structure located as presented in the information.
Thank you. Counselor Claussen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've heard Lee scribbling down my notes so I don't forget them when I got my turn. I have a few. One being, why, why hang on to the park's prep yard where it is? I'm not sure if that's something that can be discussed.
I'm sorry, didn't hear you. Why?
The park's prep yard, I'm not coming up with the right term for it. The storage facility, you know, is that possible that it could go somewhere else just to pick up some extra parking for the park or the apartments? Not sure which. My next question would be the quote unquote, extra square footage that's associated with the 6F issue. Where does that come into play and how does that come into play? I, I didn't really see any discussion about that, and I'm not exactly sure how well that pertains to the decision on this. So maybe a little bit of help with that, because I believe it was in the neighborhood of eight or 9,000 square feet, and where does that tie in? Next one is, is there a possibility to, for the city to mandate an increase in the parking for the development in order to help, I hate putting things in quotes, but control apartment overflow parking? I'm, I'm concerned about that. We say that a lot out south, which is a far different issue than in central Salem, and I don't know if it would be as big of an issue or not. But parking that overflows out of a parking lot because, or out of an apartment parking lot, because one and a half stalls per apartment usually doesn't cover most apartments, two cars, or potentially more. So it concerns me that the carousel parking lot could be filled up by overflow parking. Next, maybe a little bit more clarification on the staff recommended, recommendation to really detail out what aspects or issues are contingent prior to moving forward with the access. Obviously, the 6F, we're not going to move forward with the access if 6F doesn't go through. But it wasn't entirely clear to me. And if there are other aspects similar to that, it would really help me if it was kind of brought to the forefront a little bit. And then, one thing that I'm always confused about with any, anything that's presented to us at, at different levels of design for any development is, when we make a decision, how much can change before construction starts? And that always confuses me. I mean, are we going to get a totally, is there a potential of a totally different building? Is there not? Is it locked in? Or, you know, maybe a little discussion to that effect. I, I'm always not really sure what that's going to be. And I'm sure I'll have more that I'll email in.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Counselor Dickey?
Thank you. I'm actually going to take a moment, just an opportunity, to say thank you to everyone who has contacted us regarding this issue. And I just want to say that, and I'm sure that, like my colleagues, I have read every email. I can't respond to everyone, but please know that your communication has been read, and it's very important. So it is great to see so much public engagement on this issue. So I do have a couple of questions. Like Counselor Tesler, I really would like to have a better understanding of what the access options are for this property. I also would, I, I'm trying to understand the process for the tax credit issue. When the track, tax credit was passed, it was contingent upon access being allowed. Was that this particular access that's being asked for, if that changes in some way, a different access, or this, the plan as presented, does that change the tax credit issue? So I'd like to have a, an understanding of that process. Would we have to vote on that tax credit issue again? I'm not sure about that. And then my last question that hasn't been asked already is, if the access was granted, and we talked about putting emergency vehicles through Riverfront Park, and there might need to be some modifications, who picks up the cost for that? And, and if the city pay, has to pay for the cost of that and maintaining that, what is the cost? And actually, any part of that, if the city would be responsible, what's the cost to the city for that?
Okay, thank you. Counselor Thomas?
My questions have already been mentioned by Counselor Bennett, Counselor Nanki, so I won't repeat them.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Counselor Bednarz?
I had two that have not been mentioned so far. One was, I would really like to get a handle on the state regulation, whether it's the State Department of Transportation, the rail division, or if it is the P&amp;W Railroad, but specifically about where can we cross if we cannot close a crossing? If we close the, the auto crossing at State Street, can we have pedestrian crossing if we were to move that auto crossing down the line? And then further, if we had a rail crossing at, at Bellevue, is that going to cause us to eliminate the one at State Street, since they're at least a half a mile apart? There's quite a distance in between as opposed to just a few hundred feet down the rail line. So I'd like to get a, a very much a handle, because this is the key point of trying to get into that area, is crossing that, that rail line. Second thing that I wanted to ask about was, I ask about is bonding, bonding the, the owner of the property. If we make a decision, if we move forward, so that there's an assurance, not a guarantee, but an assurance that there'll be performance on whatever decision that we make, that he will perform and carry through, unlike what happened a few years ago. It's important to me to make sure. And I guess the other one is just, of course, flush out the other options for access, whether it's the ferry street, whether it's State Street, whether it is the commercial street property, or if it's off of Bellevue. At least I've been able to identify four locations. And Bellevue also has the option of going over the rail or going through the building. So there's, there's two things that we have talked about throughout that whole thing. So I guess there's five locations that you could come through. And I'd like to walk through each and every one of those to assure that, that we are choosing the best location.
Could you identify those five again, please?
One is State Street.
Uh huh.
One is Ferry Street. One is Commercial Street, where there's already a planned entrance just south of the office building that they're proposing. The fourth would be off of Bellevue Street, and it would be coming through the building, the existing building itself, where you would not have to cross the railroad, and, and you would not have to cross the railroad at that point. You would be going underneath the railroad tracks. So I guess that's an issue there. We'd have to flush out, can we go underneath the railroad tracks? Either go over, you go under. And then the fifth one is, if you did Bellevue, and you did cross the railroad tracks, came down the northwest side of, of the Boise Cascade property. So access.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay.
Thank you.
That's it? All righty, thanks. Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My comments are very similar to Counselor Bednarz's, in that I'm concerned about, is there the potential for access at what we call Ferry Street, which is the old access that we used to have? Is it really impossible to reopen that and, and/or move the railroad access from State Street to what we call Ferry Street? That's that old driveway, I guess I'm calling it Ferry Street. But still maintain pedestrian access to the carousel across Front Street. We have State Street, downtown traffic, Blount University, pedestrian traffic coming to the park, wanting to use the new bridge. Keeping pedestrian access there at State Street, Front Street intersection is critical. So, you know, that's a question, again, for ODOT Rail to help us answer. But my second question is, how does, if access is contemplated at Bellevue, how does that occur without going through structure? It's a pretty thick concrete structure, last time I looked at it. So I don't see how it's possible to go around that building without ending up in the slough. So folks have suggested and/or drawn diagrams showing, using Bellevue, but I, I don't know how that happens. And so that's the question. The third question that I've got is from my email that I sent September 4th, but given that cars are coming in and out of the carousel parking lot, and somebody's turning left coming into the carousel parking lot to use this access road, do they have to wait till the outbound flushes out? And does that cause people to back up onto Front Street? So somebody's making a left turn there, they can't get through because the oncoming traffic trying to enter onto the Front Street intersection, have the right of way, they're going straight. How does that left turn traffic work? And, you know, does it meet with how we want that intersection to function? The question could lead to, how does the intersection have to change? I, I do want to revisit the whole idea of what we were thinking in 2009 when we had that, that ferry, what we call Ferry Street entrance, that access across the railroad, simply because anything that gets done back in there, anything that happens back in there, it's going to be problematic with the carousel parking lot. So, you know, it's, it's as much or more for me that ODOT Rail issued. My fourth question is from a constituent, and that is, is there such a thing as a bottleneck study in terms of pedestrians, just for the park itself? You know, the mental bridge, the carousel, the amphitheater, you know, do we, is there any kind of planning done for maximizing? I want to see everybody down there. But the question's been raised, you know, are we creating so much activity in one small focal point? I'm, I'm the counselor from West Salem, and I, I view the bridges as bottlenecks. We're building another bridge. Are we creating another bottleneck of people? And it isn't so much that I don't want a lot of people going to and from Mental Island and or around the amphitheater. The question is, what happens when there's emergency, if you just got too many people in there? So maybe, maybe a silly question to some, but it begs the question, what are we designing that bridge for? And what are those sidewalks designed for in terms of number of people down there? I, I don't want to create a problem we're going to have to fix later. We do a lot of that now.
Okay, I have two questions at this point, and I know I'll have some others that I will also present in writing to staff. One of my questions has to do with the access for pedestrians. I just want some clarification. Right now, people can access the park on, through State Street, and then also through Court Street. So if there's any other change in access, I'm wondering if there'll be any effect on that Court Street entrance. It would seem a shame to lose that as an access point.
Yes, and we also have Union Street.
And Union Street, right. But Union Street comes through, well, yeah, we want to make sure that that isn't, isn't going to be closed as well. I'll add that, okay? And then my second question has to do with traffic counts and traffic studies that have been done. And I would like to be certain that, that the city validates the traffic counts that have been projected for the site, and further explore the traffic counts that we've been provided by the applicant, so that we know whether they jive or whether they don't jive. And if they don't jive, if we have an opportunity... And if they don't jive, if we have an opportunity to, you know, further educate the public about that, that fact about traffic counts. Okay. All right. Is that Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam. Process question.
Okay.
Because I know you and I had received an email, independent of the council, from a constituent on this issue, and I think several of us have gotten individual emails as well, as far as incorporating those into the record. What is the suggestion? And would that include any responses from the counselor to the individuals as well?
Yes. You'd be advised to, to forward all emails you receive regarding this issue, as well as your responses to the city report.
Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. Other questions from counselors regarding process, regarding what we're doing at this moment? Counselor Dickey?
Yeah. I just, I wanted to clarify my question about the park mitigation. I'm not sure that I said, so, wondering if there was any work that had to be done on a park. How would that possibly affect maintenance? And so, like, the ongoing, not just like the expensive, if you had to pour more concrete in the park or whatever, would that affect our park's budget maintenance-wise? I think I didn't say that, so...
Good clarification. Right. All right. That's it? Well, that's a, that's not a short list, and I have a feeling it's going to grow longer by, by the time several of us get our written questions in as well. So, thank you. And thanks to the council for being willing to sort of do it this way. Counselor Bednarz?
So, could I ask a small question here?
Certainly.
We know that we're looking at putting the Minto Bridge in, hopefully, from what I hear this evening.
I'm sorry.
In 2014.
Can you speak a little more slowly? So, noting that we are...
Knowing that we will be putting in a Minto Bridge, hopefully, in 2014.
Right.
Between Riverfront Park and Minto Park. My question is, I knew there was an issue of staging, staging equipment, staging beams, staging, all that stuff. Can, or is there a receptacle where we could end up using some of the Boise Cascade property for that staging?
Okay.
For construction only?
Okay. Okay. I guess I would add to that question. If apartments indeed are constructed on the site, what would the impact on the park be during that construction period? Would there be any changes to the traffic flow in and out of, of our area, or any, any impact on the existing parking lot for the carousel? So, it's two types of staging. Okay. Counselor Clem?
Madam Mayor, knowing that the public will, again, want to start emailing us, I appreciate their interest.
Yeah.
Can't answer them all either, but...
Right.
It's always good to know what everybody's thinking. And it really is. The questions we've asked tonight, do we need to repeat those in an email to Linda?
No.
Or just come up with, if we come up with new ones?
With new ones.
By Friday at 5:00 PM this week?
That would be wonderful. We have several people here taking notes, so I think we have it.
Okay.
We have the recording.
So, we don't need to repeat what we did.
No, you don't need to repeat the ones we have.
Okay.
Oh, you'll hear from us.
Okay. Then I have a process question. The questions that we may be submitting between now and Friday in writing, will those somehow be posted for the public so that they know the questions that we are asking? Maybe our city attorney knows how that might be dealt with, or not dealt with.
Typically, the questions would be summarized in the, in the staff report. I don't know if there's going to be a separate posting for that.
Okay. But that would come at the time for the staff report, which will be in October, on October 14?
Yes.
That staff report?
Yes.
I see. Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Is there anything further to discuss at this point, counselors, with regard to the questions or the process? If not, all right, we will then, we did have the motion. We voted on the motion. So, all we need to do now is turn our attention to the next public hearing, which is 4.0B. But I would like to give people a moment, if others are in the, in the chambers that were here simply for that public hearing, want to leave. Give you a moment to adjust the chambers a bit and come and go. And then we'll pick up the meeting again in just a moment. Thank you.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding review of the planning administrator's decision to modify Phases 2, 3, 4, and 6 of subdivision 05-19, excuse me, 05-19, for property located in the 2,100, 2,200, and 2,300 blocks of Davis Road South. This will be a new hearing, and will result in a decision that supersedes that rendered by the planning administrator. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward applicable criteria found in Salem Revised Code, Chapter 63. Testimony may also address any other criteria a person believes applies to the decision. The record of the planning administrator action with respect to this request is part of the record before council. Failure to raise an issue in the hearing, in person or by letter, or failure to provide statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court.
Thank you very much. And we have a staff report, so I will open the public hearing at this point. Welcome. I believe this is Brian Colborne?
Yes.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Brian Colborne, a planner with the Community Development Department. And this evening, I'll be presenting the staff report for the review of subdivision 0519A located at the 2,100 block, 2,100 through 2,300 blocks of Davis Road South. At this time, I'd like to enter the staff report and its attachments into the case record. The planning administrator recently approved a request to modify the undeveloped phases 2 through 5 of Belacresta subdivision. Phase 1 has already been built. This modification request revised the street plan, increased the number of lots, and modified the secondary access to the subdivision. The property is within the Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association. The Neighborhood Association did not submit comments. Comments were received, however, from nine surrounding property owners, most of which were residents of Phase 1. The main concerns raised by the surrounding property owners include increased number of lots and reduced lot sizes. And there's a detailed response to this concern in the staff report. The applicant proposes, the applicant's proposal, excuse me, does increase the number of lots from 181 lots to 214 lots in the, the area of the subdivision. We're talking about modified phases 2 through 5. And increases the total number of lots for all phases of Belacresta subdivision from 238 lots to 271 lots, with a rather small decrease in the average lot size for all phases of Belacresta from 8,834 square feet to an average lot size of 7,800 square feet. So, going from average of 8,800 square feet to 7,800 square feet for average lot size across the whole subdivision. This is relatively minor decrease in average lot size, and still well over the city standard of 4,000 square feet minimum lot size. Other concerns raised by the surrounding property owners were about secondary access to the subdivision, and traffic, and pedestrian safety, which I'll address here in the following Now, the subject property is in the southern 53 acres of the area in gray there, which is the Belacresta subdivision, located at the southwest corner of the city limits and urban growth boundary. The subdivision, as I said, is shown in gray. The urban growth boundary is shown in green on this map, and major roads are shown in red. And the property is zoned, single-family residential. The Salem Transportation System Plan has an extension of Mildred Lane planned to extend along the southern boundary of the site, right there. And the planned roads in this area are shown in dashed red lines on this map. In 2005, a five-phase subdivision was approved in the layout shown here in red. Access to Davis Road was proposed, and Mildred Lane was also required to connect to Skyline and to provide a second public access to the subdivision. Phase 1 is subsequently being developed, shown here in the tan color with the red streets, but Phases 2 through 5 have not been recorded or developed yet. And that's shown in green, as they were originally designed in the original 2005 layout. Due to the changes in the economy over the past five years, there have been some changes in ownership of some of the area that was planned for Phases 2 through 5, shown in the light blue color. The current application requests a modification to Phases 2 through 5, as shown here. So, that's the new plan that's been, that's recently been approved by the planning administrator. This modification proposes to not provide a Mildred Lane connection at this time, but instead proposes a local street connection called Street G. This modification request was sent out for comment, and Marion County Public Works returned comments stating concerns over traffic safety at the, at the Skyline, at the proposed Street G and Skyline intersection, and said that significant street improvements would be required in order to allow Street G to be built where there, where it was proposed. In response, the applicant met with city staff and proposed a new, slightly new layout with an emergency-only access in what's been called Street, Lot B, a small strip of land owned by the city, owned by the applicant, excuse me, that's part of this property that has frontage on Skyline Road. The new plan involves emergency-only access to Skyline Road, and would be a gated and paved driveway only accessible to emergency services. So, essentially, due to changes in the economy and the new owners, several changes to the original plan for Phases 2 through 5 have now been proposed to the city. We have, as city staff, have reviewed those modifications, including the emergency-only access plan, and concur that it satisfies the subdivision code and fire department secondary access requirements. It's also very important to mention right here that we're not saying that there will never be additional connectivity to Belacresta subdivision. As you can see on the plan, there are many stubbed local streets that are incorporated into the layout, such as here, and here, and here, and to the south, and to the, to the northwest. And those, those will provide, in the future, connectivity to Belacresta. And then, of course, Mildred Lane, which is, as I said, a planned arterial street connection, will also provide a future connectivity for the subdivision. Now, this is a photo just showing a typical street within Phase 1 as it's already developed. And now, this next shot, I've got the map here with the little green perspective box here, and you can just imagine that you're standing at the, at the small end of that, that triangular-shaped area, and looking in the direction of the arrow, looking south. And so, this, this shot's looking in that perspective, looking at one of the stub streets in Phase 1, towards the future Phase 2 through 5 to the south. And then another shot from that same location, but then kind of looking to the southeast instead, across the, the land which is planned for Phases 2 through 5, subject of this evening's case. And then finally, you've got another photo here that's also within Phase 1, looking to the, to the north at Bel, at the intersection of Belacresta and Davis Road. And this is the, the sole access to Phase 1 today, and would be the sole access, required access at this time. But as I said, as surrounding properties and Mildred Lane is provided in the future, there is definitely potential for additional access. So, the planning administrator's decision was to approve the subdivision modification with conditions, and staff's recommendation this evening is that council affirm the planning administrator's decision to approve the subdivision modification. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Do we have people signed up? Yes, we do. All right. We have a number of people signed up this evening for the public hearing. And the way I'd like to do this is to call a couple of names at a time, and you can position yourself. Both microphones work, and that kind of helps to, to move the hearing along. Jason Anderson, and then Eva Lee, followed by Diana Anderson. And be sure and let me know if you are either the applicant, or you represent the Neighborhood Association. Yes?
Actually, the, the applicant has a burden of proof, and they will go first.
Oh, all right. And who is that on here? Did they sign up here? All right. Mr. Shipman, you're first up.
I am. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion here.
That's fine. That's okay. I'm Mark Shipman, Land Use Attorney with Sawfield Griggs, 250 Church Street, Suite 300, Salem, Oregon 97301. Here this evening...
And I'd just like to confirm the amount of time that you have. You have 10 minutes, well, this says 15 minutes. So, I'm getting 15 and 10. So, somebody tell me what it is.
Mayor, I'm going to... 15 minutes.
15 minutes? All right.
I'm going to take less than two minutes, frankly.
Okay.
And...
All right. Ah! Sorry. Thank you. There you go.
Wonderful. That's a good start already. I'm here this evening representing the applicant and property owners in support of Agenda Item 4B. We agree with staff. Our request does satisfy all the mandatory approval criteria necessary to approve the subdivision modification application as submitted. And we respectfully request that you affirm the decision of the planning administrator approving the subdivision modification as recommended. And at this time, I'd like to enter into the record our complete traffic impact analysis. This is the same report that your traffic engineering staff has reviewed and has approved. I don't know that the entire report is actually in the record at this time, and I would just like to make sure it is. Are traffic engineers here and can answer any technical questions that you may have at this time? Otherwise, we would like to hear what the opponents have to say and reply to the comments that they would have on rebuttal. One final comment, Mayor. If you take a look in the staff report, and specifically, you got to dig a little deeper, but what staff, what, what Brian didn't address was the conditions of approval. And I think it's important for the council to know that there are very specific conditions of approval as a part of this subdivision modification request of this applicant. And what the applicant is proposing here is they're proposing to break up this, the five phases into subgroups, into subphases. And if you take a look at the, the staff report, and specifically, I would direct you to, I would direct you to Attachment E in your, in your report. So, as your hearing testimony, if you have a question, I would direct you to Attachment E, because in Attachment E at the very front are the proposed conditions of approval. And they're very specific with respect to the different, the different subgroups and triggers for when the applicant is going to have to improve different parts of Davis Road, and improve different parts of Mildred Lane. So, this isn't something where the applicant's just getting off the hook, and they don't have to improve either of those roads. They are. But what they've asked for, and what staff has agreed to, is they've agreed to phasing that based on those subgroups. And I think that's important to point out, and important for you to, to see in the staff report. That's all I have. If you had any questions of, of me at this time, otherwise, we'd like to reserve time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How many trips per day out of the full Phases 1 through 5?
Carl, do you want to come up? My name's Carl Burkey, and I'm a traffic engineer. And I, I live in Newburgh, but I work here in Salem. Your question is, what's the ADT? And on the traffic study, I didn't put the ADT in there. Each house will generate 9.57 trips per day. So, basically, you can take 10 trips times the number of houses, and that'll give you how many trips in a day. Normally, what you care about is what's the worst hour of traffic. And there, we look at the worst 15 minutes multiplied by four, and that's, that's the number we'll work at. And in the PM, the trips, the total trips will be 234 trips during the PM peak hour.
Excellent. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I had one question.
Go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Did your, did the traffic analysis deal with this Street G issue?
Yes. It was in a separate...
Did it recommend Street G? Or where did Street G, or the change the county ask, or how does that get?
Well, what happened was, was I did a traffic study with Street G. Well, what happened was, was I did a traffic study with Street G. And what I did was I assumed that 80% of the traffic would go to Skyline Road. Half of that would go on G. 40% of the total traffic would go and come on, on G Street. And the other 40% would go on, come on Davis Road over to Skyline. The remaining 20%, we sent over to, on Davis Road, over to Liberty to go into town. But then, when we went to the county and they said, we're going to make, this just isn't going to work, then we talked to the city and said, we would like to look at putting all the traffic on Belacresta to Davis, and that 80% go west to Skyline and then into town. So it really only changed the information that Belacresta and Davis, and Davis is Skyline. And we ran those numbers, and between you and me, the capacity, we're at 18% of the capacity of that intersection, so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other questions? Thank you. All right. Is there a representative of the Neighborhood Association here this evening? All right. Yes, are you?
I am, but we could not have time to discuss this. Sorry.
Okay. So at this point, you don't have anything. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Then I'm going to continue with the signup sheet as it was presented, and we'll start with Jason Anderson, followed by Eva Lee, and then Diana Anderson. And you'll have three minutes. At the end of two minutes, the amber light comes on, and then at the end of three minutes, the red light.
My name is Jason Anderson. I live at 2251 Tuscana Avenue, which is four houses away from the subdivision or the entryway of Belacresta and Davis Road. And he had mentioned the hours of the day. As a resident, I do care about trips per day. I live four houses from that intersection. That is very important to me and the safety of my family and my neighbors as well. I have a short video here that I would like to play, and I kind of briefly narrate it. And this is the entryway of Belacresta pulling out onto Davis. There are some major safety concerns I have putting that many cars through this address. I'm currently at the stop sign. I cannot see down Davis Road either way. I creep forward, continually forward, 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 to where the nose of my car is almost in the middle of the road, as you can see there. That point, I have line of sight to pull out. There are numerous cars that come over that hill, and it's very dangerous at times. I've almost been hit multiple times pulling out of the, out of the address or out of the subdivision, because people do not mind the 30 mile an hour speed limit. Pulling down to, this is Skyline on Davis here. I'm at the stop sign as well. Cannot see cars coming from the left, cannot see cars coming from the right. All the foliage and everything blocks your way, the private property, there's more cars coming as I start to creep forward so I can get a line of sight. And in the springtime, that foliage is extremely bad, especially where the fences on the left there, you cannot see that oncoming car coming towards May and June. So still waiting to pull out here. And as you can see how close my car is to the roadway, I've had neighbors that have sold their cars to get bigger SUVs so they could actually see the direction and see cars coming. And I'm actually impeding that van pulling onto Davis Road as well. that's, that's pretty much the sum of the video there. I'm very concerned about the safety, especially when you're routing, as he said, 10 vehicles per household, 271 households. That's 27, over 2,700 cars a day coming through that one intersection. They're not allowing Mildred to open up, which I disagree with. I request that they do infrastructure Mildred in there, allow a secondary access for the community and public access, access, not just emergency access. The traffic in sight distance I showed there, let's see. We ask that the city review this and leave Belacresta as it was. My wife and I, we bought into this community when it was originally planned out. That's what we were promised. That's what we expected for our family, animals, everything, our neighbors. It is a very close community, and we're just asking you to leave it how it was originally laid out.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Anderson? Counselor Tesler.
Yeah, I have two questions for you. Number one, I was really hoping you had someone else in the car with you holding the video.
My wife was.
Okay, good. That makes you feel better.
Yeah, she was holding it. More close to my line of sight, yes.
Okay, great. I would really have hated if you would have gotten in an accident and then showed that movie. The other one was, you know, when you pull up to the corner and you see that foliage and the things, you know, disrupting your view, if the neighbor doesn't want to cut that, you can call compliance services from the city and they will-
There's numerous neighbors that have notated that and made-
Right. Yeah. I'm just saying, did you know that was available to you?
Yes.
Because they will make the person cut that so that you can see. Okay.
Well, if that is county property, that's not the city's responsibility. Is that correct?
Like, if it's the city property, yes.
Yeah, because that's county property currently there.
If it's county, then I don't know what to tell you if it's county property.
Not city access. So that's, I'm relaying my concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
Were there other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And Eva Lee, followed by Diana Anderson.
My name is Eva Lee. I reside in Belacresta and a home address with 2227 Milano Avenue. And I come to express my objection to the modification of the subdivision. And I just want to show this picture. Probably most of our neighbors and maybe some of the city planners have seen this before, probably five years ago. And we purchased a lot, in Lot 62, about four years ago, and it was a beautiful planning. And we love the neighborhood. We love the view. We came from a nice neighborhood, but we like this more because we want to build a house, we can retire. And we built a house with no stairs, so when we get old with wheelchair, we can roll in our neighbors. We don't have a single step to go into a house. And that's what we want. We retire here. And I remember that time, I asked the developer, I said, this is only Phase One. It's beautiful. What happened when you had the five phases coming out? And they said it would have the same plan. All the houses have the requirement. And I said, how about the traffic? Because this is Phase One. You have this one outlet. They're going to build new houses. Are they all coming through here? They said, no. If we start with Phase Two or Three or Four, Five, there will be other streets open up. It will not go through here. So what I want to say is, that is what we were told four years ago. And I know lots of things changed. Economy changed. And I know there will be changes to the new subdivision, and the new owners will do things with good reasons, I believe. But certain things cannot be compromised. Certain things had to be kept. And one thing is safety. And I'm really worried, our Lot is 63, which is the corner, which showed the picture over there. And I heard the Lot size is small, and also the length of the houses be longer, meaning there's no stop when car driving down. Think about driving on the neighborhood. If a longer stretch with no intersection, what will happen? Traffic time, going to work, people will speed up. And it will turn. It will be just our house coming downhill. It will hit our house. I cannot imagine when I'm old, back out of a car, how I'm going to back out, and my children. I think lots of things can be compromised, but safety not. And I'm worried about my family, my children, our friends. So I really hope, and they can change their mind. And the last thing I want is there's no other outlet. I think the Mildred need to be opened up before they develop, so would not be all the traffic coming all along that we cannot drive out. And it is for our family, for everybody around us, I hope. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak here and you guys listen to me, and thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your testimony. Are there questions for Ms. Lee? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Diana Anderson, followed by Wayne Ackerman, and then Jolie Ackerman.
Director?
Yes, thank you.
Hi. I'm Diana Anderson, Jason Anderson's wife, and I live at 2251 Tuscana. And I oppose this change that you're in the process of trying to do for two main reasons. One is safety, but also because it's not what we bought into when we spent our hard-earned money and saved to put aside for this house in this great neighborhood where we want to raise our children. But as far as safety is concerned, one access road to build 271 houses in our neighborhood, I mean, honestly, that's kind of ridiculous, because we already have our entire neighborhood nearly full of traffic, but then you want to add construction trucks. And then keep in mind also, our mailboxes are right off of that entrance. And people come off of that hill that my husband's video showed, and they whip into our neighborhood. And it's already dangerous, as it is, trying to check your mail sometimes. And now you want to add bigger trucks, construction trucks, train, I mean trains, cranes, things like that. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. But that is a major issue to me, especially considering the fact that I am the one that checks the mail. I'm going to get hit, and that doesn't sound fun. So, but also, as Eva said, extending the block lengths, I mean, what do you, well, not you, but younger people sometimes, when they're in a hurry, they're going to work or anywhere, the longer the block length without an intersection, the more apt they are to drive faster, even in a neighborhood. I know every neighborhood has that one or two cars that do that. And if we're going to be doing that, we're going to be making our neighborhood all the less safe. And when we bought into this neighborhood, we looked for months, from January until June, to find this perfect house where we wanted to raise our children and start this family. And if we start putting all of this traffic in our neighborhood, it's not going to be safe for my children to play in this neighborhood that I thought I was buying into. And I feel very much like someone was luring me there with cake and then traded it out with something like vegetables. I mean, I was promised one thing, and I was given something else. And I just, I am very much against it, and I want to make that known.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Anderson? All right. Thank you for coming. Wayne Ackerman, followed by Jolie Ackerman.
Hi, thank you. My name is Wayne Ackerman. I live at 2211 Tuscana Avenue there in Belacresta. Thank you for the opportunity to share my opinion with why I oppose this, propose changes. My experience in Belacresta has been an interesting ride. I was actually bought the very first lot in the neighborhood, waited for the final plat to be done as they finished the water treatment plant and all the delays that some of the developers got into. So I've seen it from the very beginning and was the second family to move in there. One of the things I dealt with, and the biggest, scariest thing I see on the whole thing, is this future planning. I've lived through future planning and developers not being able to fund things that they had intention to. So for delaying Mildred as part of this development, as much as I appreciate a person's right to be able to change some of the plating and some of the things related to their own personal property, how it affects me, you know, I am concerned with. Traffic is one of those. I lived for two years with that house with not having a finished topout, they call it, on the road, where we had exposed manhole covers. You know, the city at the time, it was, we all know it was like No Eight and No Nine. It was ugly. The city didn't, you know, force the developers to come in and finish it because they had no money to develop it anyway. Ultimately, when the bank took it over, they got it done. But it took two years of driving around manhole covers. So the whole future planning scares me, and I see that in a bit. I believe if the developers have the means and the intention to develop a neighborhood, they should put the infrastructure into that neighborhood before it gets available to the public. So right now, my biggest concern is the development of those second phases without a second alternative to the individuals coming into that neighborhood for work, construction, all those trucks, all that, you know, all that full construction, for marketing, the sales of all that, the open houses, that kind of stuff. And on top of that, just the people that live there. So 10 passes per day, per home, every time they build a new home, I'm going to see 10 more people coming through the same intersection. It just leads towards a less enjoyable lifestyle within the neighborhood I bought into. Safety for my son, will a 10-year-old son run around on a bicycle, skateboard, that passing through that, it, you know, that does scare me. Nothing scares me more than that word "future" up there on that little display you saw. Nothing about any of those presentations scares me more. I risk with my kid, of course, but that one, I've seen the future not work out over and over again. So I'd rather see them put up the money in the beginning of the development, not at their second, third, fourth, fifth, just do it from the beginning and give everybody a second option to enter and exit that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Ackerman? Thank you very much. Jolie Ackerman, followed by Peter Lee, and then Kenny Montoya.
My name is Jolie Ackerman, and I reside at 2211 Tuscana Avenue. And I am also in opposition of the modifications to the future Belacresta subdivisions. My primary concern, my husband somewhat stole my thunder, is for the safety of my child as well as the other children living in Belacresta. I dreamed of a community where young children would run around and we'd have block parties. Because of the economy, that didn't happen as quickly as I had hoped, but now the children are there, and I'm concerned. Without an access road off of Liberty or Mildred, it will greatly increase the traffic. Huge dump trucks used to be a source of delight to my child, but now they fill my heart with fear that they will not see my child in time. I'm a teacher. Had to throw that vision in. I'm not opposed to growth, but if it is at the expense of others and of the families already living there, then I am. Please make the Mildred access roads mandatory prior to construction. Future connectivity does not give me, as a mother, peace of mind. My child is going to be riding on those roads. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Ms. Ackerman? All right. Thank you. Peter Lee, followed by Kenny Montoya, and then Paul Golden.
Yes, my name is Peter Lee. I live on 2227, sorry. I don't speak in public that often.
That's okay. Just take a deep breath and go wait.
So you heard my wife. That's our retirement home. It's going to be an investment, the biggest investment in my life. There's a promise that was given. Now it's shaking. And, you know, I teach Sunday School, and I see children, and I see safety as a top priority, and I don't see that at this time. And I watch down the hill. I see Wayne, his son, in the street. So that's important to me. I see children. I'm up on the hill. I see everything that goes on. so I think it's, it's important that we put out priorities where they should be. I walk into this room, and I was very, you're impressed to see honoring my Chinese culture. Peace, safety is blessed happiness. So I want you to consider, you know, what's said before, 200, somewhat closer to 300 houses, one entrance. You know, I want you to put your mindset into you being one of the families in there, and how does it feel? How is it going to impact you? I've seen houses, you know, from beginning to end, and they put in-
Take away dirt?
Put in concrete, lumber. You know, the number of vehicles are astounding. So I just feel that, you know, for, for us in Phase One, already endured Phase One developing, now you're asking us to endure four more phases going through our neighborhood. now you're asking us to endure four more phases going through our neighborhood. So, you know, I just hope that you put that into consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lee. We appreciate your testimony. Are there any questions for Mr. Lee? Counselor Benars.
Peter, I appreciate you coming down and I know this is not a normal place to speak in front of, so I appreciate the courage that it takes to stand up in front.
I didn't think I was going to react this way.
That's fine. I had a question in reference to Mildred Lane is supposed to enter, exit out onto Skyline. My question has to do with the Street B, the other street that is proposed to be only for emergency access, if that were for use or built out so that it could be used for vehicular traffic beyond, would that suffice for the time being, for the period of, the phases that are going in at this point?
Again, you know, I think, you know, the, I paid attention, that street, it has, before the new change, it was, you know, going in, curving in, a right angle and then going into the development. Now the new proposal, you go in, there's two right angle turns. And I don't know how, why the street is going to be, okay? I see the road in Bela Cresta. If you go through the streets and there are parked cars, I mean neighborhoods, you will have, you know, high school kids and they'll have extra cars and they'll have to park on the street. And if a big car comes along, you don't have room to go by. You have to pull over and, you know, wait for weaving to start happening. And I have a daughter, she just got her driver's license last month, and I am concerned.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Montoya, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I could have just a couple seconds before you start my official time, I have to give a small bit of a disclaimer. I am Kenneth Montoya, I do live in Ward Seven, and I am an Assistant City Attorney with the City of Salem, and I'm also on the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. I am here solely representing myself, nothing having to do with the City Attorney's Office or the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. So I just want to toss that out there. I neglected to mention that the last time, I do apologize, but these are my thoughts. The operative ordinance, if you will, that is being relied upon to get this variance is SRC 63332, and it requires that the planning administrator find each of the following conditions. And I'm going to have to talk really fast, hit my three minutes, so I'm going to skip the first three and get down to the one that matters. And that is, it is unlikely that the variance will have an adverse effect on public health, safety, welfare, or on the comfort and convenience of owners and occupants of land within and surrounding the proposed subdivision or partition. That's the issue we have. And that's where frankly, the application should fail. You've heard testimony about economics, and if you look through the record, you'll see that was relied upon, based on the current economic downturn, or the most recent economic downturn. But it's also important to note that two of the three folks who are here asking you for this, they purchased their property in December of 2012. So in essence, they took advantage of the economic downturn to buy at the low. And now they are changing it up to add more homes and affecting our property values. Quite simply, the properties that they have purchased are at the top of the hill, we're at the bottom of the hill. There is not infill, we haven't filled all of our subdivisions. So those properties there, imagine if you're a new purchaser, let's see, your choices are one here at the bottom with no view, at a still market price, or a cheaper version up at the top that has a pristine view. It's kind of common sense that it's going to hurt our property values. And more importantly, the applicants purchased this property knowing full well was expected of them, knowing full well the planned development that had been situated there, which we all bought into. And even if you folks were to decide that, okay, lengthen the blocks, as you well know, if you've read your records, they're going to go from two at 600 feet up to seven, five to seven, that are going to be 600 to 900 feet, that's going to turn into a Speedway. But still, the main issue that we have is it's all going to be going through one single area. It will have a huge adverse effect on the current residents, and this will include traffic flow at an exact same time that our kids are going to school, lead to reduced property values for each of us. And it's important to note that in your packet, Salem Kaiser Schools has already said that our area is a hazard area. That's why my son can qualify for riding a bus despite the fact he'd prefer to run down to school. Mr. Colburn, on page five of his July 26, 2013 memo acknowledges that the current sightline distances on Davis Road don't comply with current city street design standards. And so we're going to add several hundred more trips there daily? We're simply saying, you can't add all this traffic coming through. And as this is written, they won't have to develop and fix Davis Road until 95 more houses are built.
Thank you very much. I apologize, your time is up. Thank you for your testimony. Are there questions for Mr. Montoya?
You can ask yours again, I'd be happy to answer it.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, Paul Golden, followed by Rod Ashford, and then Joyce Ashford.
My name is Paul Golden. My family and I live at 2257 Milano Avenue South, directly adjacent to the decision area. We moved to this address on April 19, 2013, and we never received any notification of this decision, which I believe is required. Excuse me. I'm here because my neighbors informed me on Saturday that this is happening. I really haven't had a whole lot of time to review the 80-plus-page decision that I printed out today and tried to look at while I was working. And so, but I do have a few general comments. From what I've seen and heard, I absolutely oppose this decision. I have two small children, looking at them going to school soon. We look to see where the bus stop is and it's down at the bottom of the hill. And my daughter's going to be walking down that street. And I work in construction and I know, nothing against truck drivers, but they don't always pay attention. They're on their phones, they get lost, and they don't see little people. And it appears that there's going to be a 20% reduction in the size of the lot. Rough math that I did, per lot makes lots a lot smaller. Houses will be smaller, children's rooms will be smaller, yards will be smaller. I didn't see any plans for a park. Nearest park is a few miles away through, it's too far for any kid to walk. Like other people have said, the longer and straighter streets, just asking for people to speed, that safety should have been considered, and the smaller yards are going to cause a lot of kids to be out in those streets playing. As much signage, speed bumps should be considered in these streets at a minimum in the limited access. All those stubbed-out roads coming in the future are great, but I lived in a previous neighborhood where those streets have been stubbed out for 10 years. My wife and I just built our house here, and if we were made aware of this, we probably wouldn't have moved to this neighborhood. But we do love the neighborhood that we're living in, that we're there now.
Thank you very much. I apologize, but I do have to draw your attention to the, time is up. Thank you. Wait a moment, are there any questions for Mr. Golden? All right, thank you for coming and testifying. Rod Ashford, followed by Joyce Ashford.
Hi, my name is Rod Ashford. I live in Ward Seven, Bela Cresta subdivision. I think you guys can see the concern that Phase One of Bela Cresta has, I mean, you have a large representation of the people that live in that neighborhood now. I do think that that intersection, although it is, as Bela Cresta comes into Davis Road, is a very dangerous intersection. I mean, there are very times I look left, right, left, and then a quick glance to the right, and I'm starting to move out, you know, looking again to the left and slamming on my brakes. Although they say that that sight vision is to a standard that's correct, it's not safe on the intersection. And I just think that probably the biggest thing is, why are we not opening up Mildred as part of this subdivision expansion, rather than a tiny little fire department-only access and taking all this traffic through? I guess the question would be, why are we not opening up Mildred like it was originally planned? And I believe the phasing in the original plan was starting at Mildred and working towards Liberty versus now they're starting on the Liberty side, working towards the Mildred side. And, you know, Mildred probably will not get developed as a through-access, as many people here have said, you know, probably for 10 years. And, you know, for some people in the neighborhood, that's a lifetime that they're going to have to live with this. So, anyway, thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ashford? All right, thank you very much. Joyce Ashford, followed by Michael Mallory, followed by Carleen Hancock.
Do I start now? I am Joyce Ashford. My husband is Rod Ashford. I live in Ward Seven, 2267 Milano Avenue. We've lived in our house for a year, and if we had known the same as, that this was going to change, we probably wouldn't have moved there either. But we're there. My neighbors have pretty much put it all in a nutshell of how we all feel. My husband did not tell you that he is a builder, so we are not opposed to growth at all. So it's just done properly, and that's all we're asking, is that you guys really consider those of us living there now. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Ashford? All right, thanks for coming down. All right. Michael.
Mallory.
Mallory, thank you.
Michael Mallory, live at 2343 Milano Avenue South. My wife Janice and I, we moved from Tucson, Arizona up here, we found the perfect place. We're grandparents and we have two lovely grandchildren who are constantly at our house. Again, it's a safety reason for us, that our children are safe in the neighborhood, say. We have one access to Bela Cresta. I just wonder if there's modification, if there's no other access to our neighborhood, how this would affect our home insurances, might modify our premiums, if the insurance agents realize that we're in more danger for, say, the fire trucks coming into our areas to maybe possibly fight a fire. I think the rest of the community that I live with, they did a marvelous job. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Mallory? All right, thank you. Carleen Hancock, followed by Judith Hancock.
Hi, my name is Carleen Hancock. I live at, oh goodness, I just blanked my address. Thank you. 2333 Milano Avenue, Sunny Slope Ward. As you saw by Jason's video, sightline's horrid. I've almost been hit eight times coming out of that subdivision when there is snow or ice. Even worse, because you're sliding down that hill and they're sliding down towards you at that stop sign. It's kind of an oh shit moment, frankly. And coming back into that subdivision, it's kind of funny. I'm lucky I get to work from home. I'm in my bunny slippers and I kind of watch the comedy unfold as people come home. They can't make it up that hill. They can't make it up the smaller hill. And so you're asking for 200 cars a day more? That's, eh, that's just 2,000, sorry. It's not the development I was promised. I'm not against growth. God knows, I used to work up in Portland for a high-density developer. I know what it's all about. I have no problems with growth. We want growth. I'm tired of hearing the coyotes at 3 o'clock in the morning, frankly. And it's also going to cut down on the number of kids going up into the City of Salem's water area that you've got through Bela Cresta that's, and I've been afraid all summer that someone's going to start a fire up there. Ultimately, I realize I can't stop the additional lots proposed. But I would urge the council to push for earlier versus later development of the Mildred access and the infrastructure. Just because of the safety issues, it's, you wouldn't want to live there knowing how dangerous it truly is. I really, I commend the young man for his report, but he really missed the mark when he took the picture down this way. It's really pretty. Get up to that stop sign, it's really ugly. So other than, then, my house has already taken a hit from the economy and I can't afford to take another hit by smaller lots, probably less well-built, maybe? I'm not saying, I don't know. It's just, it's hard. It's really, really hard. I would urge that we don't extend the number of lots and we get the infrastructure in first. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Hancock? All right, thank you very much. Judith Hancock, followed by Lou Walter, and then Penny Walter.
I'm Judith Hancock, and my daughter and I live at 2333 Milano Avenue South. And we are very concerned about the safety of the streets. We're on the hill where I can look down and see that intersection with Davis, and I see people almost get hit daily. I look down, I see people going after their mail, and the cars come around the corner and just about wham, it's frightening. I see people walking with their children and their pets, and I think it's wonderful and it's a good place to live, but I am afraid. I am afraid for what's going to happen. I have had occasion to call 911 and have had a good response with the ambulance and the fire department. But if we got an ambulance and two fire trucks, which is what came to my house when I lived in, on Ivory Way, it would block that traffic so that it would be, there'd be no movement. And it really worries me about the safety. If we should have a fire up there, good grief, how would we get out with only one entrance and the one little exit? That hill that leads down to Davis, called Bela Cresta, is very steep. I can't go out and walk down that block because it's too steep for me. And there, I'm not the only elderly person in the area. So I have real concern for the safety of all of us. If we get too much traffic going up that little two-block street that is Bela Cresta, and it's not all that wide. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mrs. Hancock? All right, thank you for your testimony. Lou Walter, followed by Penny Walter, and then Colleen Barrow. Okay? All right.
Yeah, my name is Lou Walter. I live at 5757 Verona in the south in Bela Cresta. I'm not going to bore you with the same things you've already heard, but they're all true. It's only a matter of time before there's a major accident at that intersection. It's just, it's not when, but, it's not if, but it's when. I looked for two years to find just the right house. It was going to be my last house. And I was, I felt given a promise. And more than that, I felt I had a contract to how this community was going to be put together and so on. And I feel... And I feel that promise has been taken away, or is going to be taken away if you allow this change. So I hope you'll consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Walter? All right, thank you for your testimony. Penny Walter?
Yes, my name's Penny Walter, and I live at 5757 Verona in Bellicresta. And I, again, voice all these same concerns along with numerous small children up there. We're having a house built on our same street right now, trucks in and out, all this extra stuff going on, and all the little kids out and about, riding bicycles, smaller yet, can hardly see them because they are so low. So, just many concerns with the whole thing. So, just strongly oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mrs. Walter? All right, thank you. Colleen Barrow, and followed by Denise Breezy and Mark Breezy. Welcome.
First, I'd like to thank you for hearing us tonight.
Can you speak right into the microphone?
Right into the microphone, okay. First, I'd like to thank you for hearing us tonight. I was about the fourth house to come in, and there's about 35 houses now. So I've been there throughout the building phases of just the small phase. I'm at the top of the hill, at the corner when you come into the development. I'm at the corner, up at the top. I'm not originally an Oregonian. I am from Pennsylvania. So we looked for a house, about 40, and then we decided to build. And our view is amazing. I saw a house being built in front of my neighbor. That took away their view. That was promised that our view would not be taken away. I've seen little by little things taken away. So basically, we moved here for nicer people, fresh air, better weather, all those things. And then Oregon's economy dropped out as soon as we moved here, and me and my husband couldn't find a job. My husband is finally a writer, and he writes from our house. And I've seen 35 houses built, and it is loud. And he said for me to say, if you would like to come to our house when a dump truck goes around it and be in my house, it is loud. And I have a hearing problem, and if I can hear it, it's loud. So basically, this is going to be five or 10 years, one entrance. We have school bus staff on this side, we have the mailboxes on this side, and we're going to have about, what, four times the amount of homes being built coming through that one entrance. So I love Oregon, I love my neighbors, but if I would have known, I would not have built where I had built at all. I really would not have. For safety alone, I've seen children almost hit by cars several times, and we're not even talking about the new phases. Basically, open up Mildred and give some peace of mind to my poor nervous blind dog, who did not have a nervous problem until 35 houses came in. And I want to be happy that I moved to Oregon. I love Oregon, I love my neighbors, and I moved across country to live here, and this scares me. It's going to be one entrance for all of these houses, and I've seen a quarter of it.
Thank you. I have to remind you, your time is up. Are there any questions from councilors? All right, thank you very much. Denise Breezy followed by Mark Breezy.
I guess, we live at 2261 Tuscana Avenue South. And we both oppose this situation as well as the accesses because it's very unsafe. And we just want to make sure it's a safe place to live, and we've lived there for three years, and we just, we really, you know, like our neighborhood and our home, but we just don't feel that it's right to be promised one thing and then get messed over with something else. And also, I want to say that those, that the access road that you're planning on using for all these people to come in and out of is very slippery when it's icy out there. So be prepared for multiple ambulances and fire trucks are going to be needed in the area if you go and let all these people in and out of that one access. It's not going to be a pretty sight. And basically, I have the fire hydrant in front of my house, so if I can have a hose, I'll keep it on hand in case my neighbors need help. You know, I'm just saying that I just think it's very unsafe, and I hope, you know, we can do something about it before we let these people, you know, get away with not putting the extra access road in, because 10 years down the line, nobody's probably going to be around to worry about it, and they'll just forget about it, basically. So here we are, we'll be stuck with one access, and that's just not enough for that many houses and people in and out, especially with as many as we have now. So I just wanted to say that that's why we oppose, you know, the situation, and, go ahead, Mark.
Excuse me, wait a moment, though. Are there any questions? Excuse me, it would help if you could maintain some silence so other people can testify and listen to that testimony. Are there any questions for Mrs. Breezy while she's at the podium? All right, thank you very much. Mark Breezy followed by, is it Julie Serno? It's difficult to read the writing, but maybe someone will know who that is. All right, please.
Thank you for your time. My name's Mark Breezy. I live at 2261 Tuscana, and I've been at this Phase 1 for about three years now. I just want to applaud and echo everything that was said that's on record tonight. I'm not going to say safety more than once, but my other concerns are, has you have, have you displayed the water and sewer? Were you the questions of this project? Where you can get the water, the sewer capacity? The other thing is, is the infrastructure to Mildred? I'm in construction, and if you don't build the infrastructure first, it'll fail. You'll get more complaints from everybody else around there to the city if you don't have the infrastructure, so people can get in and out safely. But that's all I have. Any questions?
All right, are there any questions from councilors? All right, thank you very much for your testimony. And the last person signed up, I'm sorry that I'm not able to read the name probably correctly, if someone can help me out. It's Turri or Drury Serno?
Yuri.
Yuri. Yuri, and how do you say the last name?
Is no longer here.
I think you wasn't able to confirm that his name is on the list.
Oh, I see, all right, okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the chambers that wanted to testify? Yes? All right, thank you. Please approach the podium, and then if you'll state your name and address, and, or your ward. Okay.
My name is Catherine Mayfield, and I live at 2241 Tuscana Avenue. And I live with all of these great people. I'm nervous, excuse me. My biggest concern is that we were not notified. We've lived in this subdivision for a year and a half, and we never received any notification of this modification. Besides, I do echo everybody's concern with safety. That's what really I'm upset about.
Thank you. Are there any questions by councilors? All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yes? Thank you.
My name is Sean Mayfield. I live at 2241 Tuscana Avenue. I wanted to express my concern in not being notified of this. Unfortunately, I travel a lot, and the only way I knew this was Jason, who happens to be my neighbor, told me. So I'm just here to oppose this modification. I do want to add one personal note of an experience I had doing my deck about two months ago. A police officer pulled over a teenager right behind my house, and I happened to hear the conversation, which is very interesting. But if you recall on Davis, which I know that's not the subject here, but where people are pulling out, he had come from Skyline and accelerated that one block to 60 miles an hour to that intersection, and the sheriff stopped him there. So I think there's some risk involved in Davis and that intersection. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there questions? All right, thank you so much. Okay, we will now hear from Mr. Shipman for rebuttal, seven minutes.
Questions of staff first.
Oh, questions of staff first. I'm sorry. I apologize. We do have time for questions for staff, and I imagine we would have some questions from the councilors. Which staff are coming up to the podium?
It depends upon what we ask.
It depends upon what we ask, all right? Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to have a clarification on the notice question that's been raised.
Notification was provided to all property owners within 250 feet of the second through fifth phase area of the subject property that's to be modified. So that picked up most of the lots within Phase 1. I don't know that it picked up all of them, the ones that are on the far north end, but that's, you know, there was also a sign posted on the property for this hearing this evening, and the Neighborhood Association received notice, and so that's the other way that neighbors could get information through their Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Counselor Nanki, did you have your hand up?
There were several in front of me.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, Counselor Benars?
I was just hoping to get a clarification of what streets are existing out at that site at this point in Bellicresta, and what, of the maps that I've seen that's in the report, and what are yet to be built? I don't know, you had a slide a while back that...
Yeah, I'll turn that one back on that map.
I've read the report from front end to back end, and I'm just trying to figure out what's there and what's not there.
The streets in red are there, so that's Phase 1. And black is the, are the main roads.
Okay, thank you, that helps.
And other questions? Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. I want to go back to the notification, just to be clear. So was there, when this was first approved by the Planning Administrator, was there notification that went out to residents at that time?
Yes, there was.
And would that have been, like, written notification to the residents?
Yes.
Like mailed to them, is that how that works?
Correct.
Okay. So, but you said you're not sure if everyone in Phase 1 would have received notifications?
We generate a map that shows us 250 feet from the subject property, and the map's in the file, and then we have a list of all the names that received notice that, and that list is notarized. We have an affidavit that's notarized stating that we did indeed send the notice to those folks.
So 250 feet would not necessarily reach all the affected parties, not everyone in the neighborhood, is that right?
I'd have to look at the map, but I don't believe it did reach all the folks in Phase 1, correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick follow-up question. 250 feet from where?
From the area in blue, which is the subject property in this case, the property that's being modified.
250 feet from the intersection with Skyline Road and the proposed Mildred Road, or where? Do you have a pointer, and you could show me where the 250 feet is?
Sure.
Okay.
I can use the mouse, I hope this works, but this is the, this is the subject property, and then 250 feet will be measured out this way, and, just for, this map's obviously not to scale, and I don't want to hazard a guess, but I'd have to look at the file to check exactly which lots within Phase 1 received the notice, but everything within 250 feet north of this blue line here. And the reason for that is that even though this is all Bellicresta subdivision, the subject property is the area that's being modified, and Phase 1's already developed and already in ownership of 50-some different parties at this stage. So notice would go to the 250, folks within 250 feet, the Neighborhood Association, just like any other land use application.
Mr. Gross.
Mayor, if I might, Glenn Gross, interim Community Development Director. What Brian is saying is it's 250 feet all the way around the entire perimeter of that blue area.
Okay.
And then we take that area and, using our geographic information system, generate a list of property owners as listed in the current Marion County Tax Assessor records. Then we take that list and produce mailing labels, and that is what we use for the written notice that goes out to those individuals or people. So, just to clarify, that's how that works.
So does that mean that 250 feet from the blue area might include homes that are on the red line that goes up to Davis Road?
As I said, I don't think it actually made it all that way, all that far in that direction.
Okay. Even though they are the affected parties, if this Mildred Road, Mildred Lane does not go through, they're the ones that have all the traffic coming by them, but we didn't send them a notice.
Right, well, the 250 feet is specified in our code, in our Salem Revised Code. So that's what we're required to use.
And Madam Mayor, for just a point of reference, the state law only requires 100 feet, or the Salem Revised Code requires 250 feet.
Counselor, where did we leave off? Counselor Clem, did you have a question, and you had your hand up first? All right, thank you.
I do, thank you very much. Brian, as depicted on this diagram, does G Street understand that the hearings officer said, approved, the emergency access only? What does that mean? Is that just a little street, 16 feet wide with a gate on it? I mean, what does that mean? Is it a real street or not?
It's not a street. It's a paved driveway. I believe it's 20 feet in width, which is the minimum fire truck width, and it will have a gate, so it'd only be accessible by the fire trucks who have a special opener for that gate. I have a photo of the location here from Skyline that may or may not be helpful here. So this is at the, at that location of B and where B, Lot B, where the emergency only would intersect Skyline, and then this is just, and I apologize, that's not a very good photo, but that's just looking down that strip of land. It happens to be owned by the developers, it's part of the subject property, and happens to have some frontage on Skyline, so it met the minimum requirements for that.
Is B Street a collector?
I'm sorry, B.
Is B Street, I'm sorry, G Street? Is G Street a collector?
Yeah, so G Street would be a local street, and just for reference, let me go back to that, what we're referring to when we say G Street. So G Street here was the proposed local street in place of having the Mildred connection under the original plan, and that would be just a local street. And the alternate option that is in the final decision of the Planning Administrator gives the option to do G Street, but also gives the option to do the emergency-only access instead, which would just be the 20-foot paved.
I believe Counselor Nanki, Counselor Clausen, and then Counselor Benars.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is one of the reasons why we started the Neighborhood Task Force. Single exit, then people wouldn't be notified, and it sounds like we have some timing issues as far as notification as well. When would the last notification have went out to residents?
Well, the notification for this hearing was sent out 20 days ago.
But as far as any land use activities, because I keep seeing, oh, and we extended 30 days, and we... 30 days, and we extended 120 days because this thing has been dragging because of county decisions and what have you as well. Residences would have been notified upon the initial filing of this as well, correct?
Right. Yes. The planning administrator's decision, there was a notification for that process. That was a process that did not include a public hearing for the subdivision. Subdivisions don't require public hearing. They do have a notice that's sent out. We receive comments from the folks who received the notice, who want to comment, and then we issue a decision. So they received notice at that time, and then when it was called up by the council, there was another notice sent out for this hearing this evening, as well as a posting sign on the stubbed ends of those streets that I showed you as they approached the second through fifth phase.
Okay. And then, final question in regards to Neighborhood Association, since we actually gave them communications funds as well that could be used in the event that we wanted to extend the notification area, and we did that on purpose because of that. Were they notified as a Neighborhood Association that this was the case, and this was that type of development, and did we actually, were we requested to present anything to them? And if not, did we remind them of what they can do?
Yes. Yeah, part of the protocol is that the planner, myself in this case, we call the Neighborhood Association Land Use Chair when the application first comes in, and give them a heads up. And we also encourage all applicants to meet with the Neighborhood Association and give a presentation. I don't know exactly how much contact has gone on through the whole process with the developer and the neighborhood. That'd be a good question I suppose to ask them, they could probably tell us, but we certainly encourage that sort of communication, and we contact the neighborhood early in the process so they know the application's coming, and that they can hopefully get it on their agenda, you know, and work it into their agenda as well.
Do you know whether or not they actually got anything?
They got a notice.
Or did they have a presentation or anything?
They received a notice, and they could have requested a presentation, but we didn't...
To your knowledge, they got a piece of paper and...
We didn't get any comments from Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association.
And just to clarify, we did not suggest to the Neighborhood Association that they employ any funds that they might have to do extra advertising of this.
No, and it would be more, there's going to be a certain number of landowners that are not going to be notified near that intersection, I think was what we'd always worked at from that Neighborhood Task Force thing, to make sure that we let them know you're going to have a whole bunch of angry people at the very end, because they're not going to know anything until you're dumping another couple thousand cars out in front of their house.
Well, we didn't...
I mean, that was the whole reason we went through that, and we had, you know, community development staff there, as well as neighborhood services.
We do encourage the applicant to approach the Neighborhood Association. We always do that at the beginning of the application process. Whether they do that or not, we, you know, we can't require that. We always send a notice to the association, and we are always willing to go present to the association if they so request. There's always going to be cases where the 250 feet doesn't quite maybe touch somebody that might be interested, and so we debated that during the task force, should we make that 250 feet 500 feet, or 1,000 feet? And it was decided that, well, state law requires 100, and we're already doing two and a half times that, that's probably adequate, so...
Because we could let people know if that kind of an event would happen, and it sounds like we didn't, which is a shame for some of the people sitting here tonight who found out over the weekend that things were going to be changing big time around their property, so sad. Timing on Mildred. It's based on a phase, and it was real difficult, looking at the maps, to figure out where the phases were, and there's not one big map like that that says, and here's Phase Two, Three, Four, Five, to where we can figure out when Mildred actually gets done. I was trying to look at Attachment E. Will Mildred be done at the end of Phase Four, or end of Phase Five, or how is that laid out in?
Hi, Glenn Davis, Chief Development Engineer. To make it clear, Mildred Lane will not be completed to Skyline Road by this developer. Mildred Lane will stop at the edge of the blue boundary, as you'll see there. Mildred Lane is constructed within the blue contiguous with each development that fronts that street. So as those phases develop along Mildred, Mildred will be built in those phases, but would end at the east and the west where the blue boundaries are shown.
So we would not have any kind of an off-site improvement requirement to actually make connection? We do that other places. That wasn't...
No, we don't. It is actually outside urban growth boundary, and we would not have authority to require that in the...
Okay. That answers a lot. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Clausen, followed by Counselor Benars.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure who to ask this question of. I get confused with all the attachments. What was originally approved? What are we changing from? Could we flip to that slide? I know you had that in the presentation.
Sure, yeah. Yeah. So this was the original approval, and the red shows what was built, Phase One, and the green shows what was originally approved but not built. And then, that's what's being proposed now. That's what's being modified as far as the layout of streets.
So could you go back again to the original, please? So, yeah, what's the green between the blue and Skyline? Why is that green?
Here?
Was that ever, what I'm trying to figure out is, was there ever in the original development a condition that there be a second, second access from Skyline?
There was. There was a condition that required Mildred to be connected, and in fact, it even spoke about Mildred connecting not only to Skyline, but through to the east, to Liberty. And just for a bit of context, that was done in 2005. There was not only this development going on, there was also another subdivision called Whispering Winds, which was over on Liberty. Things were rolling, things were happening, and that condition did not seem unreasonable, and it was basically what was being presented to us. As ownership changed and as the economy changed, the owners have presented a new plan to us, and what they presented now does still meet the minimum requirement, which, for secondary access, which is simply the fire code requirement for secondary emergency-only access.
So the existing, if this revision is not approved, the existing development requires connection to Skyline by Mildred and connection to Liberty?
So there is, there is another detail in there. So in 2011, this development requires two things, a UGA and the subdivision approval. In 2011, there was an amendment to that UGA approval, which specifically allowed an option for the G Street connection here, a local street connection on the Skyline, in, as an alternate to the original connection here that was required. And so the subdivision that was submitted that we're reviewing now is really corresponding to that 2011 UGA amendment that already allowed for that local street connection to Skyline. So at a minimum, we have a UGA that already allows that linking street requirement. And without a modification, if this were to be denied, I guess it does raise the question of, you know, could they really use that UGA approval? They do need a modification of the subdivision ultimately that's consistent with that.
Yeah, I think my bigger question is just along the lines of what access, you know, with the UGA amendment allows the G Street. The Public Works letter from Marion County says that G Street is not acceptable due to site restrictions, so on and so forth. I'm seeing on page 114 of this staff report, not that it's your guys' fault, these just get long. Bullet number six from Public Works from Marion County, they state, quote, "Salem's transportation system plan includes an extension of Mildred Lane South that connects to Skyline Road South. We recommend that the proposed development be required to complete that connection, including a left turn lane on Skyline Road South in lieu of a midpoint connection, AKA G Street." I don't know why we wouldn't make them put Mildred in to Skyline. Marion County said to do it. I mean, I'm trying to understand, I'm trying to understand this, because I get really fired up about developments that don't have multiple points of access. This is really bad for the city of Salem, and I'm not just talking emergency, I'm talking livability. I don't know, I don't understand where Mildred went.
Counselor, if I can try to answer that question. All the land use decisions have given them options as to possible secondary connection points. Even the original decision back in '05 was, their proposal was to connect Mildred from Liberty to Skyline and make that complete connection, and we said, that's great. And in this case, we've given them, they still have the option of connecting Mildred to Skyline. That's in the decision as an option, it's just one of many. And the question before us is, is this fourth option, being the emergency-only option, is now the proposed option for secondary access? So it's not as so much, is Mildred required? It is an option, but it is outside urban growth boundary, so it's difficult to make that a condition because it's outside of jurisdiction.
Could it be a condition of our approval of the amendment to say that the developer needs to have that secondary access on Mildred, and they've got to go work with Public Works at Marion County to make that happen?
We're limited to our jurisdiction, so we can't require them to connect from Mildred to Skyline as a condition of approval of this decision. Now, they have property that abuts Skyline Road, the G Street. One of the potential options you could do is require that to be a local street connection as was originally proposed.
So we can't make it a condition that the Mildred connection be there in order for this to be approved?
Right.
I don't care what happens outside of it. I mean, that's somebody else's jurisdiction, but we can, otherwise, we could just leave it how it is. Right?
Correct.
Which says they have to connect Mildred to Skyline already.
As an option, that's correct.
So I guess I'm not...
What happened in the original decision is that it said comply with the UGA. The UGA's been amended.
To allow a midpoint access, not take away the Mildred one?
Correct. So they could, they could do either or. So they would not be, under the original approval, I think they're no longer required, and Peter and Glenn helped me out, they're no longer required to build the Mildred connection.
And no longer required under this proposed revision?
Obviously.
And then, but if we said do the G Street as a residential street connection, they're not going to be able to do it, because Public Works in Marion County has said, no. Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct.
Hence, where it kind of devolves to the emergency access only.
I would clarify that the, they would need to talk to the county about what the county would need in order to make that a safe intersection.
Okay. So maybe there would be some additional requirements in order to make that happen?
Yeah, the county would have to...
In order to get the county approval for... So again, we're back to county approval of a condition we put on this. I'm not seeing how that's different.
Well, and as far as the G Street connection goes, it's within the city of Salem.
But connecting to a street outside the city of Salem that Marion County controls and has conditions that we can't?
That's correct, but that's, I mean, as long as we're carrying the street, it's within our right to do that, because it's within our jurisdiction.
All right. I guess I'm definitely real interested to hear the applicant's rebuttal on this line of questioning. I'm real interested. I mean, we turned down a, in my ward on Mildred, we turned down a talk about putting in a bullet, you know, dead ends to split up an existing street, and, you know, the whole thing was about connectivity, and, sorry, I don't want to get into deliberation. So, thank you.
All right. Let's see where we are. Counselor Benars, then Counselor Nanki, and then Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. I want to clarify a little bit on Street G. We have a little sliver that ends up going to the north, or at least that's what I see on this. And yet, when I look at the plot on page nine of 123, it shows G Street going basically out perpendicular there. You can see it in blue as opposed to yellow. That's in county land. Are we not ending up in the same predicament that we are with Mildred Lane?
I can answer that. In a sense, yes, it is, but it's an option provided to the applicant, and that's the option that they selected in this, in this proposal. So we are saying that isn't a viable option, but it does require the county to approve it.
Well, they've selected the option for the emergency-only access, which stays within that sliver of land that goes to the north. They have not optioned, they've not asked for the option of Street G, which goes perpendicular to Skyline.
All right. I'll clarify, yeah, I thank you for the, the original application that they submitted to us showed the Street G option. We amended that through the process because of the county comments. The emergency access is entirely in city limits.
It would help me, and further, and I think it was alluded to, I'm not sure who said it, but to know the phases, in my mind, is one of those things where if Phase One is on the left-hand side of the screen of this drawing that you have up on the slide, it makes sense that either Street G or the Mildred extension would make sense. If the Phase One is clear at the opposite end of this whole thing, it becomes awfully strange. It would just help me to know where to phase in. If I can go at a midpoint and make it a collector's street, Street G, and if the immediate development is around that area to start with, it helps that connectivity and gives us a second exit out of the location that's not just for emergency vehicles.
The conditions of approval require that connection with the first phase, and the first phase also requires a second connectivity. So really, the northern section, pretty much almost the entire northern portion of it is the first phase in order to provide all connectivity that's required, so...
Yeah, but what's Phase Two, Three, Four, and so forth?
The developer actually shows about 15 sub-phases that can go in many different orders, and so it's not really a clear phasing plan in that same sense.
Okay. And the last question I had, just out of curiosity, I lived in Laurel Springs for 18 years, and whether it was Acacia, Balsam, Eldorado, or whatever, we had the issue of long street block faces, and we actually have gotten traffic, the radar guns to clock people. I have no idea how long, let's say, Balsam Street is, which is parallel to all the other streets in the neighborhood, but is that comparable to some of the lengths of these streets that they're talking about here?
Yeah, the block lengths, the standard is, again, 600 feet maximum. They've requested to exceed that, and they vary, it's around 630 to 660 feet in length. There are four blocks in the center here that are, that would be exceeding the 600 by that relatively small amount. There are, there was mentioned of a 900-foot block in the staff report, and that's, that's a reference to a block that was, that was here, that was already going to be, you know, about 900 feet with the original proposal, and just remains, you know, greater than the standard.
I see in this, we're only getting a two-dimensional view of the world, where you have a nice, long, straight street. I have no idea about the topography, where, what hill it goes up and over and through, and I do know that in both Acacia and Balsam, that the neighbors got together and put their own street bumps in, just because of the problems they had with the distance, the amount of length, and the speed that kids got when they were coming through, was what the issue we ran into. So I just, there's concern about distance, about speed. So, thank you.
All right. Counselor Nanki, followed by Counselor Dickey.
I think I'm good, Madam Mayor.
You think you're good. All right. Counselor Dickey.
Can you, I know this is on one of these maps, but can you show me where the urban growth boundary is, maybe on one of the maps that show the area better?
It's the, it's the green line here. Runs along the south side, and the south and west sides of this property are there along the urban growth boundary, and it goes north.
So this is, seems kind of unusual, and I'm, this is why I'm really, I'm kind of confused about this. I know that, in my ward, I have a lot of area that kind of butts up to the urban growth boundary, but we don't typically see developments that go outside the city limits and outside the urban growth boundary. So, and this doesn't go outside the urban growth boundary, but certainly, the neighborhood is affected out to and beyond that urban growth boundary. So is this, this just seems really unusual to me, that we would not only be dealing with the Marion County jurisdiction, but also outside of the urban growth boundary? So it seems like it brings in another layer of, or removes another layer of things that would have to be done. So, show me on this map, so the, where, so Mildred is on the south, is that right? So that red dotted line would be, okay. The red, that red dotted line in that little triangle up there would be where the connection is that we're talking about, from Mildred out to Skyline, that little piece?
Correct.
Is that it? So it's just a little bit outside of the urban growth boundary, and everything else that is in the property is in... And everything else that is in the property is inside the city of Salem. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question maybe for Glenn or for Brian. We've run into this problem before, where, where infrastructure was needed for the city to approve a development that was in the county. I'm trying to remember, but it seems that there is an agreement with both Marion and Polk Counties that the development standards for property contiguous, connected, adjacent to the urban growth boundary, shall be constructed per city codes to the same standard as city codes, i.e. the stormwater problem on Wallace related to the apartments there, the treehouse in West Salem. So I'm trying to play that same thinking here. Why couldn't, and I don't want to argue with the attorney, but why couldn't Mildred Lane be a condition of this, if in fact, the county has already made this statement, you should put in Mildred Lane, and we have these agreements in place with the county?
Mayor Vai May, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. Mildred Lane is what I, what I often call our, our Madrona of the South. So, so it is, it is planned from Skyline, and it actually runs, it turns into Fabry, just, just west of Commercial, and then it extends to Reed Lane, and ultimately, there are plans to extend it all the way to Battle Creek. So it is a long ways. Through city investments and the, the, the strong development market of the early 2000s, we got the piece built between Liberty and Lone Oak. At the time, we thought, and this is, this is in our transportation plan, it's in the city's transportation plan, it's in the regional transportation plan, it's in the county's transportation plan, so we all agree that this is where the street is going to go. And our intent, when, when Bellicresta came in, which is, which is a subdivision that for years has been out of sequence. I mean, you see this, it's, it's in response to Counselor Dickey's comments. You know, here it sits way on the edge, and everything in between it and Liberty is not developed yet. But our expectation was that pieces were going to be developed, and only small fractions were going to be missed, so, so that, that the city at some point would have to tie in, or what have you. What we're looking at here, and what the council is struggling with, is actually putting in kind of the last tail end to provide this subdivision. And so we're looking at this minor arterial, you know, and providing this, this final tail end. You know, the, the, the city staff would be delighted to have that last piece put in, because over time, we'd at least have the west end of our arterial completed, and all we need is sort of that middle piece as it comes. The struggle is that it's outside of the city limits, and it's outside of the urban growth boundary, so therefore, you know, can, can it be required of, of this developer or not, is really the, the issue. There's other issues related to, you know, we're not so sure that it's even SDC eligible, you know, in terms of a funding source to assist the developer in, in building it because of its location. So that's, that's kind of the struggle that we have with that, with that little tail. We would envision in, in, in the future, if pieces were built, that in a distant bond issue, we would put in a bond issue and finish off the pieces. And then we could finish off the piece, or we could partner with Marion County to finish off the piece. It's just way early in the, in the planning horizon.
So the westmost piece there, where it would go into Skyline, just is out of our reach?
It's, it's, it's out of our reach right at the moment, is the way I would put it. Yeah. As important as it is to, to, to the issue here.
Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, since we have a Streets and Bridges Bond committee meeting this week. How much would something like that piece actually cost? A lot.
And, and here's why. It's not the segment of, it's not the east-west segment, it's the improvement along Skyline. And the magic words there are that Marion County, who is the road authority on Skyline there, wants a left-turn lane, and probably wants some vertical alignment addressed as well. So, so the cost isn't just Mildred, but it's the, it's the significant improvements on, on Skyline. So, the other problem that we'd have, and why I, I wouldn't recommend it for, for the current Streets and Bridges Bond, is we don't know when the developer is going to build that phase. So we could find ourselves with the council saying, "Hey, build that little nub of Mildred," and we'd have it there, we could have it there sitting for years, with no access to anything other than the, you know, the owner of, of that county land. So that's a, you know, it's just, it's just the timing is just very difficult here.
When you say a lot, how much is a lot?
You know, I'd be, I'd be hazarding, I'd be hazarding a guess. You know, Mr. Wizenhut represents the, who's the engineer, represents the property owner, might have done some work. You know, it's, it's easy to get to six figures on just about anything, when it relates to transportation, but I, but I'm really just hazarding a guess.
Other than that, is that something like the, the Regional Transportation Group could put funds out too, or is that just too small of a project for something for...
Well, they would federalize it, and, and then, you know, we have, you know, it, you know, it could. I mean, this is something that we could, if we felt the timing was right, we could approach the Salem Kaiser Area Transportation Study and say, "We want to fund the whole thing." You know, "We want to build the rest of Mildred Lane." But again, there's just simply no development out there. So other than it's a nice regional connection to Skyline, most because we're, we're a farm-to-market kind of road system, you can just go up Liberty and get to the same spot. You don't have to go up to Skyline from, from the point where it finishes today.
True.
And being in the urban growth boundary, SCATS isn't likely going to see it as a regional priority. It's, most of it's in the city.
Okay. Thanks.
I think Counselor Clem had his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the piece with Mildred Lane, I'm sorry, G Street, am I saying that right? G Street?
Yeah.
What, what, could council direct that G Street be a, elevated from a driveway, a fire truck access road to a local street or a collector?
Well, not, yeah, and, and I caution the council, it is not a collector street. It's not designated, that's, that's a transportation system plan designation, a functional classification, and there, you know, there are no collectors in this, in this area. There is the minor arterial, which is Mildred Lane. Everything else is, is a local street. So it would be a local street. You know, what you would be telling the, the applicant, I think, is that they would need and work harder, they would need to go back to the county and work harder at figuring out how to make G Street work.
I was thinking that the local, the emergency only access yellow line there would be G Street, because it's in the city limits.
My understanding, and, and again, I think in the rebuttal, perhaps Mr. Wizenhut can be given a minute or two, because he's the one that actually visited with the county, but my understanding is the way the county would agree to it is, as it is shown here, more of a 90-degree connection. And then there was some engineering work that, that would need to be done. My, my concern with the G Street connection, I don't think it's insurmountable. My concern with the G Street connection is I would not want to have anything done that would jeopardize the ultimate connection of Mildred Lane, which is, which is important to us. But I think, I don't think that's insurmountable, but it'd be an important consideration.
But out of our reach until...
Until, until, it's, until its day comes.
Counselor Lawson, I believe, has his hand up.
I'm interested in the rebuttal.
All right. All right. Are there any further questions of staff? Thank you. All right. We're ready for rebuttal. And my understanding is that you will have seven minutes for rebuttal. Does that sound correct to everybody?
It sounds great. Thanks, Mayor. I don't think our rebuttal's going to take that long, actually. And if you have specific questions with respect to, with respect to particularly Lot B and G Street, our engineer, Mr. Wizenhut, can come up and speak to you regarding that. First of all, I want to talk about safety of streets. In the staff report on page 11, the August 2nd, 2013, they talked, they give a little bit of history with respect to Davis and, and Bellicresta, for one. They talk about when that subdivision was constructed, Davis was reconstructed to remove severe hump in the road and significantly restricted site distance, and it was lowered over 15 feet along the subdivision frontage. And the intersection of Bellicresta and Davis was located in a manner to provide adequate site distance at that location. We didn't design or, or change Davis and Skyline whatsoever. That's, that's not something that's, that we did. But what I do want to talk about is, is our traffic study shows that there's not too much traffic. I think there's a, there's this great concern that there's going to be too much traffic. If you look at our traffic study, it shows that that location currently operates at a level of service B. Now, in traffic world, level of service goes from a standard of A, being great, to E, being extremely poor or failing. We're at a B currently. It operates at a level of B currently. If we took all of that traffic, and staff, thank you for having this, this exhibit up, this is going to be helpful. If we took all of the traffic for both the current Phase One and proposed Phases Two through Five, out Bellicresta, out Davis to Skyline, it would still operate at a level of service B. So it's operating at a very, very good level of service. Next, a lot's been said with respect to block length. And with respect to block length, city staff had determined, Mr. Montoya had referenced that a variance was necessary, and I think city staff, when they initially sent out the, the notice on this, made an error with respect to the variance, and a variance is not necessary, as noted in the, in the staff reports. Staff has identified that 63-135 grants the planning administrator the authority and discretion to approve a block length greater than 600 feet. And I think staff had previously noted that there already were block grant, block, this is a mouthful, and it's late. There already were block lengths that were greater than 600 feet in the prior approval. Okay? Our request in getting these block lengths granted rests on, I think, three to four elements. The first rests on topography, first of all, based in the area. We're trying to keep the slope of those streets less than 12%. And the reason we're trying to keep those, the slope of those streets less than 12%, the grade of those streets, is to satisfy new requirements for public roads with the ADA. Okay? That's another, another element. Next, so it all ties with slope, topography, elevation, the ADA requirements. Staff addresses this in their staff report on page 20 in the original August 2nd, 2013 decision, actually, in the planning administrator's decision. And staff had noticed, had also gone through a similar analysis and got into more detail with respect to, the block lengths are also in part due to the existing configuration of Barbaresco and Tuscana Streets within Phase One, and that's why we're needing to go to the 600-foot standard. They believe that the, that the adjustment there was warranted and necessary. Third, some discussion was brought up with respect to the 2011 UGA preliminary declaration, and I just wanted to bring that up again and identify that what we're seeking to do here in this request is to line up with that declaration that allowed us to move off of Mildred and be able to potentially put in G. And through this process, we've heard from Marion County Public Works, they would not allow G, but they would allow B. They would allow that, that Lot B option, and that's what we're advocating, and we would encourage you to approve this evening. And then finally, I want, want you to know that, that we're not asking for any variances here. We're not asking for any conditional use permits. This isn't a zone change. We literally satisfy all of the elements of Chapter 63 in the subdivision code. This is something that you can and you really should approve. Staff have done a great job in the proposed conditions of approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time, or any specific technical questions of our engineer. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there questions of Mr. Shipman? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you. Ms. Shipman, you mentioned Marion County not allowing G. Do I, is it not allowing, or is that it's not engineered correctly, and it just may be more expensive to put in G as proposed?
I'm going to have to have Keith Wizenhut, our engineer, speak to that.
Good evening. My name's Keith Wizenhut. I'm a principal of Project Delivery Group. We're at 3150 22nd Street Southeast. And in response to your question, I think there are, it's not just one simple issue. There's the issue of the intersection spacing along Skyline. The, the county in their response indicated very strongly, they were not supportive of intersection spacing that would put something between the proposed Mildred connection and the existing Davis Road connection. They also indicated that if that were constructed, then they would, would require that it be abandoned when the Mildred connection be made, if that were to be made under county jurisdiction. And the, the third issue relates to an existing stopping site distance the county has on that roadway, and they were, would require that that stopping site distance be corrected, even though with the connection location, the, the intersection site distance criteria was being satisfied. So there was, there was, I think, a combination of several issues that, that makes that Street G connection somewhat problematic. And, and that's why we're here tonight.
Yeah. I just want to clarify, it's not that Marion County won't allow it, it means it's going to be very, very difficult to do. It's what I hear you say.
It means it'll be difficult to do for the developer, and then also, if, if Mildred connection is made in the city, it was stated in their, or made under county jurisdiction, it was stated that they would not allow both connections to exist.
Well, that's, that gets me to, I guess, the next question I have, then. It sounded like Marion County strongly recommended a Mildred connection. Maybe I'm missing something. I keep hearing this, Mildred won't happen for years, and Marion County's saying, "Why don't we take this opportunity to connect Mildred?"
Well, I think, with all due respect, Counselor, I believe it's because the county didn't have any skin in the game. If they could pass it off to...
I don't know what that means. I really don't.
That means, that means that if they were, if they can pass off what I estimated to be a million and a half to $2 million project to a developer and have no, no impact to the county, they would be very, very supportive of that. And I think that's why they took that stern position.
So they would allow Mildred to be built, as, it just costs a lot?
They would allow Mildred to be built if Skyline were reconstructed at the same time, yes.
Okay. Not sure I, I understand, but I, I hear what you're saying.
Well, Skyline needs to be reconstructed with the Mildred connection because of site distance issues, both intersection and stopping site distance, and I'm sure that Peter or Tony Martin could add to that, but...
So we can't do Mildred, we can't do G. All we really can do, I guess, is this little alley emergency access. That's really the only thing that's possible.
That's correct, and the traffic study shows that it works fine.
Okay. One other, Madam Mayor, I wanted to ask Mr. Shipman. The process that, that this went through, can you kind of, when were the, were there any public hearings during this process, up to this point?
No.
So, the way this works is Mr. Gross or someone takes this in and, and delivers an administrative decision based on the law? Is that kind of how this worked, or what happened here?
Well, I've gotten involved in this process, late in the process. I'll, I'll say that.
Was there another lawyer involved, or...
No. No, there wasn't another lawyer involved with this, with this application. But typically, when an application's submitted, an application like this, it's done at administrative level. Notice is, was sent out to the neighborhood associations. I understand that the, that the, the engineering group that is representing the developer in this case contacted the neighborhood association and asked to, that they wanted to make a presentation at the neighborhood association, and the neighborhood association said they would contact them, but there was, there was no follow-up on, on either side. And so, so that's a side, that's a sidetrack. What happens after that is that staff then, they, they send out notice, get public comment, and then based on that, they put together the, the staff, essentially, the decision. The decision is mailed out to, essentially, not the decision itself, but a notice of decision. So if you look in your packets, you'll see the typical notice of decision that identifies the, the outline of the criteria and, and a map of, a general map of the area. That's... That's then sent out to the public. And at that point, they can either appeal, or in this case, as council did, council did the call-up. And so, there was, I don't believe there was an appeal in this case.
I guess, I guess the question I've got then is, was there, was there a meeting with these neighbors, the, really, the neighborhood group really didn't have much skin in the game, to paraphrase your engineer, but these neighbors do? Was there any attempt to meet with them and have some sort of discussion with them? I know that's a common development strategy, to make sure nights like tonight don't occur. Did that happen here?
I don't believe so.
That's, in fact, just, just thinking back to what Councilor Nanki mentioned about our Neighborhood Task Force, that was sort of one of those big recommendations, that developers meet with neighbors who are affected so nights like tonight don't occur. I'm sure you'd have given them that advice, because this isn't, this seems to be a fairly difficult outcome for this, and confusing right now.
Well, we don't, we don't see it as that confusing. I think what's confusing is the, is the unknown with respect to Mildred and that future connection. And I think as staff has indicated, it's, that's really not on the-
It didn't sound, it doesn't sound unknown, it sounds expensive. That's all. It doesn't sound unknown. It sounds like Marion County'd go for it if you'd fix up Skyline and run the thing through, because they don't have any skin in the game. And somebody else pays for it. So there is, I mean, it isn't like there's an unknown here. It's just not feasible at this point.
Well, and I think that's what drives the unknown, because it's not feasible. We have a feasible alternative, and that's Lot B. And our traffic, our traffic analysis identifies that it's safe. Your staff has identified it's safe. The fire marshal has identified it's safe. And, and I'm sorry that we didn't contact the current owners of the residences or the lots in Phase 1. I mean, that would have been, that would have been a great thing to do, had we started out in the beginning, but unfortunately, we didn't.
Other questions by councilors? I see three hands up at the same time. Councilor Claussen, then Councilor Dickey, then Councilor Benars. No, your hand was, all right. Claussen, and then Benars.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Shipman, I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my brain around, the original condition was an access to Skyline, and my understanding, and I don't want to put words in the mouth of the original decision or approval of the subdivision, but a full-fledged access is the way I understand it. And so, in essence, what we're being requested to do is provide kind of a, just the emergency access in order to move the development forward until such a time in the future as Mildred Lane goes forward. I mean, has, has there been conversation with Marion County about what Mildred and Skyline would look like? Has there been pursuit of Marion County participation in this and Marion County programs, such as our SDC programs, things along those lines? I mean, I'm real interested in that, because secondary accesses and large-scale street systems that have only one point of ingress and egress for residents, I mean, it concerns me. It's just not comfortable for a lot of people. So, can you help me out there? I mean, and really, I guess the point is, has Skyline and Mildred been pursued?
I don't know personally that Skyline and Mildred has been pursued. I see Skyline and Mildred as maybe not being a regional solution, but I see it being more than just a local developer solution. I mean, as Peter identified, it serves, it serves all of the residential, both urban and rural, from Skyline all the way to the east, you know, past, you know, almost out to Battle Creek. And that's a huge, huge connection at that point. And I think that, you know, I think that it's reasonable to require a developer to put in a proportionate share with respect to doing that, but I don't think it's reasonable to, and I don't know that it's legal necessary, to require them to make that connection at this time. And so, that's the, that's the dilemma that I have.
Right. I guess I'd just be, I'm real interested in Marion County's potential of being able to help with things like this. I mean, we have this here in Salem, I imagine they're kind of sophisticated.
I agree, and I think that, I think that the solution really needs to come from a, it needs to come from a joint effort from the, with the city and the county, and putting their collective heads together, because, you know, this is a project that, that's a, it's a very significant project, as Keith identified, and it's not one that's going to get resolved very quickly, nor constructed very quickly. And I think that, you know, I'd like to think that a collaborative effort could be made and a, and a plan put into place, and then that way, the different jurisdictions could put it in their transportation plan, and how they're going to make it happen, how they're going to fund it, how they're going to make, you know, folks like this developer be able to pay, you know, their proportionate share to be able to, you know, to contribute towards that.
In terms, in terms of timing on that, I mean, if this decision went to our next meeting, do you see that being a big issue?
As far as this decision going to your next meeting?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't-
But, sorry, I don't want to put you on the spot, but-
No, I think that our next meeting is 23rd, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I don't see, I don't see a problem in going there.
Okay. Councilor Benars?
Mark, I had alluded, or not alluded, actually talked about the different phasings of the projects. I know that there are five phases that have been presented here, which apparently have been divided into 15 or plus or minus phases. Do you have any idea what direction they were talking about developing next after Phase 1?
Counselor, I can speak to that. The approach to the lot groups or the phasing was done because there were three separate owners, and there was an effort to work with the city, and city staff was very understanding and cooperative to provide for opportunities for the three individual owners to proceed as though they were three separate developments and not be relying so much, allow one property owner necessarily to block or to hinder another. And what's expected to happen is, as mentioned before, the areas along the north would develop initially, and then it would essentially progress from the east to the west and from the north to the south, in some order that would allow for the timely and orderly extension of surface and utility improvements.
I don't know if it really matters highly if it goes from east to west. My concern is around the area of G Street, any sort of development, or potentially, if it were built out.
That portion has to be one of the first portions developed.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear.
Okay. Other questions from councilors? Councilor Claussen?
Madam Mayor, may I request a short recess to consult with the attorney on something really fast? This is the attorney. I would bend over and whisper in his ear, but with my cold, I don't know if he'd appreciate that.
All right. We'll take a very quick recess for you to do that. Okay. Leave, have finished asking questions of staff? Would that seem correct?
We would have to have a rebuttal.
Yes? Well, that's true. All right. And rebuttal is over. And I believe that it's time to entertain a motion. Councilor Benars?
Yes, I would like to, if I can craft these on the fly here, I would like to, I would like to keep the public testimony open for this issue and hold it over until the September 23rd, next council meeting that we have.
Second.
If I can clarify that, Madam Mayor.
Written testimony, not oral.
So your motion would be to, to close the public hearing, but to continue, to continue the hearing, close it for public testimony, and allow written testimony only?
Thank you. You said it more eloquently than I did.
Not by much.
All right. All right. Councilor Nanki?
Can you hear a second, everything for that? Motion's good. So, in regards to rebuttal off of written testimony, aren't we obliged to provide the developer with that material a certain number of days prior to the continuance, or?
The hearing is still being, it's continued at this point, so at the, at the September 23rd meeting, if there's a request to keep the record open at that point, then you'll have that rebuttal period. So, so the answer is no.
But if we're entertaining written testimony to still come in, that's testimony that the developer hasn't seen and would have to have the opportunity to rebut.
And the applicant has the option to request an opportunity to make final written argument. So yes, he can do that, but that's at his request.
And you say final written argument? Was that what you said? Okay.
So, at this point, the oral testimony will conclude tonight. You'll reconvene on September 23rd. At that point, during that period, you'll be allowing additional written testimony to be received. The applicant has the, has the opportunity to request, an opportunity to make final written argument. And if they submit a written request for that, we can deal with that on the 23rd.
Okay. And we're allowing testimony up until 5 o'clock on the 23rd?
That's correct.
Okay.
Who was the second on that motion? Thank you. All right. It's been moved by Councilor Bennett, Bednarz, and seconded by Councilor Bennett, to keep the hearing open until September 23rd, to allow for written testimony, to close the record to oral testimony at this time, and to-
The record is closed, oral testimony. The written record is open until the 23rd.
Right. All right. All those in favor, is there discussion on the motion? Councilor Tesler?
This is just a, I wondered, I just wanted to mention one thing. I have been sitting here for seven years and looking at that calligraphy, and I never knew what it said, so I really wanted to thank Mr. Lee for telling us that it said peace, safety, and blessed happiness. So if Mr. Lee is still here, would you guys let him know I said that? Thank you.
Thank you very much, yes. All right. Is there any other discussion on the motion? All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We are close to-
We're okay.
10 o'clock. We're okay? We're going to be all right? All right. We have a third item under public hearing, Item C, and I believe that the city recorder has a script to read, and then we have a staff report.
The San City Council will now hold a public hearing, receive testimony regarding adoption of ordinance bill number 2913 relating to multiple-family high-rise residential zone, amending SRC 149.020 and SRC 149.040.
All right. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jason Richling, and I'm a planner with the Community Development Department. For the sake of the time, I'll be brief. I'm here tonight to present the staff report for proposed amendment to Salem Revised Code Chapter 149, the multiple-family high-rise residential zone. At this time, I request that the case file for the code amendment, the staff report, and its attachments be entered into the official case record. The RH zone affects approximately 90 acres or 164 properties citywide, and as indicated here, is generally concentrated in three areas: the north downtown, inner northeast neighborhoods, and in West Salem at the site of Capitol Manor. The intent of the RH zone is to allow multifamily high-rise development in close proximity to the downtown core, while amending University and the Capitol Mall. While the RH zone is a multifamily district, approximately 63 lots within this zone are currently developed with single-family homes, some of which are designated historic resources. Single-family dwellings are currently classified as a conditional use in RH zone, requiring public notice and a public hearing prior to approval. It's recently brought to staff's attention that this has created a difficulty in folks obtaining financing when, at the time of sale or refinance for homes, and it creates an impediment to rebuilding a home that has been destroyed or substantially damaged. And so, staff proposes an amendment that's consistent with the city's other multifamily zones, and would allow for replacement of an existing single-family home in the zone as a permitted use outright in the zone. And that's intended to assist property owners and prospective home buyers with their ability to purchase, refinance, or replace existing single-family homes while maintaining the ability of the zone to be developed in accordance with the high-rise, high-density model that it was created upon. Here's some of the case history here of when the notices went out. They did so in accordance with state law and with local ordinances. We have received one piece of testimony in support. The Nenn neighborhood voted to support this code amendment, and Nenn is where a lot of the RH zone land is located, on September 2nd to 2013. So in conclusion, therefore, based on the findings and conclusions in the staff report, staff recommends that council amends SRC Chapter 149 to allow replacement of existing single-family dwellings as a permitted use within the zone in advance, in gross ordinance bill number 29-13, to second reading for enactment. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. And I believe we have one person signed up to testify, Laura Imison. Thank you for coming this evening. Appreciate your attendance here at this late hour.
Should we introduce you to such a long day?
I know.
Hi, I'm Laura. I miss my mother in Portland, but-
I just phoned.
Oh, yes.
Another one?
Yes. Sorry.
There you are.
I grew up in Salem, Oregon, born here. So I'm here actually representing my mom and dad, Don and Deanne Scarborough, who lived here their entire lives, bought a house, their starter house in West Salem, and then bought a house in central, in Ward 1 in Central City in June 1969. I moved in there when I was seven years old. My sisters and I went to now-defunct Garfield Elementary School, and my parents still, well, my, so my, a few months ago, my dad got ill. We started in earnest to get them packed up out of their house and discovered this little glitch. And my father passed away, my dad, we were moving my mom out. She can't sell her house because you can't, she can't get a buyer because they can't finance it. So, appreciate this so much. Just wanted you guys to know that this is not just a solution in search of a problem. Thank you so much for your very prompt attention. Thank you so much, Chuck, and I hope you'll all vote yes.
Well, we appreciate you coming and your testimony tonight. And are there questions from councilors? All right. I'd like to take just a moment and say thank you to your family, and particularly to the service that your father provided to this community for many, many years. He was highly respected, highly loved. So, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you. All right. I would like to see if we have any questions of staff? No? All right. Then we will, do we close the hearing at this moment? Hearing is now closed. And Councilor Bennett, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Bednarz. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
My mic from behind me.
All right. We have no special orders of business this evening and no unfinished business. You all know that there are information reports in your packet, and we'll move on to the first reading of ordinances, and I believe that the city recorder has a reading. Do we need a motion for extension?
It's going to take her longer than two minutes to read that number of digits.
All right. Is there a motion?
Five-minute extension, sorry.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to extend for five minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Ordinance Bill number 2713 relating to certain businesses and vocations operated within the city of Salem, amending and renumbering sections, creating new sections, repealing SRC 30.005 through SRC 30.990. SRC 31.005, 010, 012, 020, 032, 081, 082, 180, 200, 240, 250, 285, 480, 482, 484, 486, 522, 562, 572, 574, 591, 593, 594, 595, 596, 597, 680, 720, 750, 800, 993, 994, 995, 996, 997, 998, 999, 1,006, 1,007, 1,008, 1,020, 1,035, 1,055, 1,060, 1,070, 1,075, 1,085, 1990. SRC 33.005 through SRC 33.990. SRC 34.002, 004, 010, 012, 120, 122, 150, 170, 990, 36.010, 070, 990. SRC 39.010 through SRC 39.990. SRC 42.012, 015, 020, 026, 027, 028, 040, 090, 120, 140, 160, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you very much. All right. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to move staff recommendation. Is there any discussion?
Nope.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And the second item is 8.1B. And does the recorder have a statement to read? Okay.
Ordinance Bill number 3013 relating to Salem Housing Code, repealing SRC 59.002 through SRC 59.990, creating new sections, SRC 59.001 through SRC 59.990, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Is there a motion, Counselor Bennett?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor Benars, to move staff recommendation. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I see nothing under second reading.